I'd like to call the meeting to order. Vanessa, will you please call the roll?
Chair St. Horton. Vice Chair Fleming.
Here.
Chair Milliken.
Here.
Secretary Davis. Trustee DeBarty.
Here.
Trustee Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Lea.
Okay. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Will we approve the agenda?
Second?
Support.
Is there any discussion about the agenda? Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? All right. The agenda is approved. Moving on to the approval of the minutes from the October 24th meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes from October 24th? Hearing none? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes from October 24th, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. Moving on to citizen participation. First up, WCCEA, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Good afternoon. Actually, probably could have stood over there to say what I'm going to say. Just a brief statement here. I want to hope everybody had a happy holiday. But it's been a couple of months since Sam Belkley arrived on campus. And I just wanted to say that so far, we really appreciate his efforts to create a working relationship, mutual trust and respect. We've been able to solve some problems. And two months in, two months, things are going well. And I just, I wanted Sam to know that. And I want the board and the president to know that.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to public comments. Was, are there any public comments? Okay. Vanessa, did we have any written communications?
No.
None? Okay. Okay. Moving on to the reports. First, we are on tab B, the personnel recommendations. Do I hear a motion to approve the personnel recommendations?
So moved.
Moved. Do I hear a second?
Support.
Support. Any discussion on the personnel recommendations?
I just have questions.
Yes.
Under economic and community development, that talent development specialist is at Harriet Street? And so you're still one short? Or do you still have, you have two?
I'm not sure if we have two. I know we just-
You had two, so I don't know.
I know we just filled this one and I signed some papers.
Okay. Thank you. I guess that's all.
Any other discussion on the personnel?
Oh, I had one more question.
Yep, go ahead.
Tristan Thomas is moved from one place to another? Is that true?
Tristan Thomas is a new person doing the screen connection?
Yeah. Wasn't that person in financial aid before? No?
If so, he was a part-timer perhaps. But he was not a full-timer. This is his first full-time position.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all right.
No problem. Okay. Okay. Moving on to approve. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to tab C, the financial reports. Do I hear a motion to approve the financial reports?
So moved.
A second? Okay.
Second.
By wave of Trustee Hatcher's hand. Any discussion on the financial reports?
I had a question.
Yep.
I'm looking at, under revenues, other. And we're showing a shortage there of what we expected. What is other exactly?
It's a number, as the caption might hold, right? It's a number of areas of the College of Missland that we get. And that also includes all of our non-credit for contract training, for continuing education. That's in other as well.
So we're off by about 8% from our expectation?
Fifty-two thousand, yep. In total, around $1.28 million or at the latest rate, about $530,000.
Is that a timing thing?
Yeah, largely timing.
So are we still on track to expect that we'll meet our annual budget on that?
I think that if you look at it, it's a little early in the year to get a whole, a real firm trend on that. We are trending slightly below what we forecasted for the first four months of the year. But the teams were, lots of contracts as of speak. And so this kind of revenue is more lumpy than smooth. And so it's really hard to get a good hold on what that forecast is going to be for a given period. We should have a much better read for that when we come back to the board in January with the forecast for the year.
And then I'm seeing a large downside on the general administration institutional services.
And that is, that's kind of planned. We actually want that to be a negative. Remember, this is, in this line item, we put a placeholder for all the vacancy savings. Because we don't know where the personnel vacancy savings are going to be. So we put a placeholder for those savings here. And then the savings actually occur amongst all the various departments. And that's why, in large part, virtually every other line item is positive to budget. Because there are plenty of vacancy savings. In fact, to the tune of about $1.1 million better than planned for the year. So if this goes exactly as planned, you would see about a $2.5 million negative here to budget. Because none of it would occur there. It all would occur in other areas of college.
So, but I'm seeing it, our actual expenditures, I don't view actual expenditures as placeholder. So our actual expenditures on that line item are exceeding what we budgeted.
So they are not. There are two kinds of expenditures on that line item. There is actual, the operational budgets for a whole bunch of areas in that caption. And that, in addition to that, there is a kind of a negative expenditure, meaning assumed savings, that isn't attributable to any particular department, but an assumption of vacancy savings across the college. So we actually are under budget for all the operational areas in that line item. But that's being offset, more than offset, by the assumed vacancy savings, which are actually occurring in other line items.
At some point, I'd like to sit down and get an understanding of the accounting process.
Sure.
Just so I can understand it a little better.
Absolutely.
And we don't need to do that at this meeting. Thank you.
Trustee Hatcher, did you have a question?
No, I didn't. That was my question.
Oh, okay. Bill, did you want to provide any other kind of overview for this part?
Sure. As the narrative tries to address, on a year-to-date basis, the college is above $3.1 million better than budget year-to-date. About $1.2 million of that is on the revenue side. As we have been reporting to the board, the college did a better-than-planned-for-fall tuition. And that was about $550,000. And then we've had a pretty significant uptick in property tax revenues then after. And that's because the actual assessed values that came in from all the townships was actually higher than what we had assumed in the budget. So we view the lion's share of the revenue variance to budget to be permanent. And on the cost side, we're about $1.8 million lower than budget on the cost side. Which about $1.2 of that is just on the personnel side. And in that personnel side, the largest share of that variance is attributable to the fact that, back to Trustee DeBarty's question of what's in that negative line item. We assumed, on average, 20 vacancies across the college. Not knowing where they're going to occur, just that on average, 20 vacancies. And we've been averaging closer to 30 vacancies. And so the value of the extra roughly 10, on average, vacancies loaded with benefit costs, along with a fair amount of part-time costs lower than budget, largely on the administrative side, have allowed us to be better than budget by about $1.2 million on the personnel side. And then there's another $650,000 on the non-personnel side, which at this point in the year, we would call largely timing in nature. So that in full, of the $3 million, we think a fair amount of that is a very strong and potentially permanent savings for the college.
Go ahead.
Another question. I know our retreat is going to be heavily on capital plans and expenditures and deferred maintenance. And as I was looking through all of that, I'm looking at the deferred maintenance in this budget as an operating transfer to a deferred maintenance fund of $1.5 million. And is that already allocated to specific projects?
Sure. If you turn to page four in the package, we have a schedule that outlines the deferred maintenance fund for the college. And you will note that the second grouping of numbers that starts with the heading "Since Inception of Fund", general fund transfers of $12.3 million. That includes the $1.5 million that we transferred from this year's budget. So $12.3 million, of which $8.6 has already been spent on completed projects. And there's another $3.3 million that is for projects that are still in progress. And so that leaves us a balance of about $440,000 in the deferred maintenance fund that is not yet directly attributable to a started project. But if you look down at the bottom of the page, that we've got about, well, there's about $430,000 worth of projects that are on deck with Damon Flowers and his team. That would fully utilize the balance in the deferred maintenance fund for the current year.
So I'm just looking, as we're looking at a possible, at the moment, operating revenue over expenditures and transfers of around $3 million. If we're going to see that at the end of the year, as we're going into our retreat to talk about deferred maintenance. And looking at, it looks like the requirement from 2012 to 2022 is $24 million roughly. And $12 million, $12.5 million has been allocated so far, including the $1.5 million from this year. I'd be looking to administration whether it might be advisable for us to allocate more money into that deferred maintenance fund to make sure that we have the adequate resources to do all of the deferred maintenance and anything else that might arise that we're not foreseeing.
That is a wonderful thought, and we really appreciate it. Remember, last year, administration had come to the board in about the mid-year point and asked the board if they'd be willing to approve a mid-year adjustment to grab the forecasted surplus of $3 million at that time and to transfer it from certain accounts on the revenue side and some cost sides where we know we have permanent savings and allow a greater transfer to the tune of $3 million into the combined campus care maintenance and deferred maintenance fund. When we get to the retreat section toward the end, I have a schedule that shows how we would propose to fund the projects, including a proposal that if this year stays as strong as it currently is, that we would propose to transfer in the current year, like we did last year, a level of funds that seemed appropriate at the time into deferred maintenance to support those projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. All those who support the financial report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Moving on to tab D, the facilities development report. Damon?
Yes. Just a couple items of note. Faculty side, the security system. We're not planning to expand cameras in this building, Morris Lawrence. This building is probably the fewest number of cameras in the building on campus. And so we're going to have some of the newer digital cameras installed. And so we've got the plan for the location, the design, and quantity. And we're going to do this all in-house with our staff to install all the electrical and the cameras and programming and so forth. And we hope to have that project, I'll forgive, at least the camera and the equipment piece, in actually the next 30 days or so. This project will be going on through winter. Until spring, we'll be done before the end of fiscal year. On the deferred maintenance side, we've completed the boiler project for BE. There's a few punchless items to remain, but that project is essentially done. We've got all the planning and design and relocation of faculty for the BE fantomie units that's going to displace the entire second floor initially. And then later, late spring of next year and early summer, the first floor. So that's all been worked out. And later in the agenda, we'll have the recommendation for the mechanical contractor for that project. We've been doing a lot of repair outside as far as this replacement concrete that's been broken. So we had some pretty good weather in the past 30 days, so we've been able to get a lot of work done. And we're kind of planning for Gundermeyer and flooring replacement on the third floor over break. And we've got all the engineering done on the Simco non-motoredized trail. It's complete. So we're pleased with that. And we just got the bids in today for the student activities remodeling on the first floor of Student Center. Hope to get that started right after the beginning of the new year by mid-year.
Any questions for Damon? Okay. Moving on then, to the remarks of members of the Board of Trustees. Anybody got anything to say?
I always have something to say.
Go ahead.
You know, it occurs to me this time, it comes all, every month. But the board memo that Rose sends out is really very helpful in terms of planning for the meeting. And I just wanted to thank whoever puts that together toward doing that. I find it very useful. I also wanted to thank, I think his name is Ramon, who works in IT at the help desk. Such a patient person with an old lady. Just, Marlon. Yeah, it would be me. I admit it. And finally, I think it's time, we got a dates and a schedule for the implementation of our police force. But I'd just like, either in December or January, an update on how that's going, how the committees are being formed, hiring, you know, what's going on.
Absolutely.
So no hurry. December or January would be fine.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Any other comments?
I guess I'll, I just want to do a shout-out for the people that are here and any viewers that might be watching. Every year, our ceramics department, students and faculty in the ceramics department craft bowls, some of which are up here on the table. And they sell them as a fundraiser in an empty bowls event. And this year, they raised $2,250 to benefit the Student Resource Center's food pantry and the foundation's student emergency fund. And this is a real opportunity for our students and faculty to give to the community and for WCC community members by purchasing these bowls at an amount that includes a donation to these good agencies is a really good thing that happens every year. And I believe they've raised close to $9,000 over the last four years. And I just want to do a shout-out to our ceramics department, led by IB Remsen, one of the most well-known ceramicists in the state. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Go for it.
Well, as the board knows, I traveled to China for two weeks. And while I was there, I, it was primarily, the trip was supported by a president from Liao Ying College in Beijing, China. And while there, I signed two agreements with two colleges that will allow us to start teacher and student exchanges. I will give the board, not tonight, but perhaps at the December meeting, I'd like to give you an overview, just a brief overview of the contacts that I made while I was there and the relationships that we've developed. And I think it's important to know that the reason I was invited to both of these colleges was because of the impression we made on the chairman and those presidents while they were here visiting us. So this wasn't a first meeting. This was a second meeting. So it was great because they came here and saw what we have, and I had the opportunity to go there. And that's how these relationships actually begin. Because if I didn't think that those colleges were something that I wanted our staff or faculty to visit, I certainly wouldn't have signed that agreement. So I'm really looking forward to sharing all that with you. I also had the opportunity to visit two medical universities, which were very interesting and a great opportunity for us to form a partnership with our Center for Excellence in Health. And so it was a very, and a teaching university, which again, was a reciprocal visit from them for their visit here. So I'll tell you more about that. We had some great things happen on campus. One was a hire of vets for Veterans Day. We had hire a vet and plus, we celebrated Veterans Day on our campus. We had major employers here that were here to make connections with vets. We had Quicken Loans, FedEx, Applebee's, and Handle With Care Moving and Delivery. More than 125 veterans and family members attended. And Dr. Eric Fretz from the University of Michigan was a keynote speaker talking about making the connection. We actually had someone here from, okay, Stephanie, the legislator from Livingston County. Mike Taylor?
Oh, Mike, yeah.
Taylor? I thought you might like to hear this, Mike Bishop. He sent someone from his office to talk to us. Actually, we talked a great deal about the veterans and how we could work more collaboratively with veterans in Livingston County and Washtenaw County. So I thought you'd be interested in hearing that since Trustee DeBarty, since you've, you know, been focusing on Livingston and the partnerships we have with them. Veterans Day celebration was very successful on November 8th. Dean Tucker was our master of ceremonies. And as you know, he's a veteran from the United States Air Force. And we had some remarks from Petty Officer Second Class JT I Covetta, who is a Navy veteran and the president of our student chapter, our veterans' chapter at the college campus. And we also had remarks by another student, veteran Sergeant Thomas Harris Jr., who thanked the college as well as the Waddams for their support at the Waddam Center. We signed another contract with the Sprinkler Fitters UA of Local 669. The work of the fire, I'm sorry, Sprinkler Fitters focuses on fire suppression. And I'd like to thank Marilyn Dunham for forging this partnership. And again, we will be training them on our campus. Look forward to that. We also observed National Apprenticeship Week. As you know, that's one of the best ways to change a life is an apprenticeship. Students, any students can actually earn and learn at the same time and earn five figures, like $50,000, $60,000. So I was really thrilled to see that. We actually celebrated this week. We only, I think we had over 500 students that, was it 500 that participated? Or no? What was it that they participated in? Manufacturing Day. But we also had apprenticeship weeks here that we included. On November 16th, we had an apprenticeship career fair. We had manufacturing day. Over 500 students came to campus. This is something new that we're doing to, and it was great, to actually experience and see what's going on in manufacturing. Our Washtenaw Economic Club, I think several of you came to our luncheon. That was a very successful luncheon with a great speaker. I'm sorry, I missed her. And our Fall Faculty In Service, I'd like to thank Kim Herns and the faculty that put together the in-service. It was quite successful. And I don't know if the board gets to see the Teaching and Learning Center. Do you have, do you receive a copy of the Teaching and Learning Center email that says what's going on? No? I want you to get one because you just need to see what's happening on this college campus. It's so phenomenal. You might recall, this is a result of talk and strategic plan. But it was the faculty that developed this Teaching and Learning Center. And when you see what's being offered across the campus, it's really, it's really amazing. Do you get our mental health, our mind your mental health emails? Okay, that's good. Do you get our water cooler? Okay, great. Okay, great. Just want to make sure you're tuned in. Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to old business, tab E, recommendations for the new programs. VP Hearn. Do I hear a motion to accept the new program recommendations?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussions on tab E?
I assume these went through the curriculum committee and so forth.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
I've seen them before.
Okay. And is this, this is just accolade, right? All right. All right. All in favor of accepting the recommendations for new programs, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? All right. Moving on to tab F, recommendations to discontinue programs. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation to discontinue programs?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Any discussions on tab F?
Again, curriculum committee. And I'm pleased to see this one. Thank you.
Anything you want to add? Okay. All right. All in favor of the recommendations, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Tab G, Adobe Software Enterprise License. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation for the Adobe software?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this?
I just, I'm checking again. There are faculty committees working on software stuff. And they've looked at this and been collaborative in terms of making these decisions.
Absolutely. And as listed here in the bullets, the majority of the software needs is the growing needs and the digital media arts area and those programs. We're working with the IT department now to better activate a academic users group that'll include the department chairs. And we're coordinating that meeting now for January 16th. So we're going to have a more structured way for us to get input consistently about the academic technology needs.
But what happens to the current academic committee with technology?
There's one, but it's not as active. And so we're going to involve the department chairs so there's more consistency in that process. Right now, a lot of those needs just come through the budget process. And as you can see here, the growing need for software, it keeps expanding and expanding every single year.
So the old committee will disappear or?
It's going to morph into a committee that allows us to engage the department chairs more consistently in that process.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this? And this is a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Lea.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to tab H, Temperature Control System Panel. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
A second?
Support.
Support. Any discussions on tab H?
I got questions about HI, J, K, and L, so I'll bring it up now. With all- With all of this money going out to various agencies, do we still, do we have any sense at all about minority participation in the businesses or the hiring or the contracting of these? Do we ask that question?
We do ask the question. We have a box that's on bid proposal forms. And, but they're not obligated to respond.
Right. That's what you say all the time. And we don't seem to have many brown people working here on those things. I just, I'm just consistently concerned about that in Washtenaw County, that's all. And hope we can continue to push for that. If we're a major employer, we need to maybe apply some pressure. You won't do that, I know. Whoever is sitting there. I think it's important for our students to see, you know, we've got apprenticeships and we've got UA and so forth. That's not open to our minority students, obviously, because they're not working here. And I don't think that's a very good image to have. I'm very concerned about it. We have, we often see brown people doing landscaping work, but nothing else. And I don't think it's a good image for us to have. So I'd hope somebody would continue to work on that and, for the sake of our students. Yes?
I need to say that we will be giving an annual report to on vendor diversity. And in there, we will go through all the proactive steps that we've taken over the last year to engage with minority women-owned firms. And we continue to have significant outreach with that.
Do any of these, was it HIJKL, have any, have any progress in that respect? Do you know?
I haven't seen the summary data yet, but, but I do know that we're, that we're trying very, very hard and trying to get engaged in all the various associations to make our bidding process to be aware by all of the minority women-owned firms.
Trustee DeVarty?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Trustee Hatcher's question. You say that they check a box, or maybe they don't. We asked them, we asked them to check a box. Can we require them to check that box? Or is that something that's prevented by state legislation?
Is that legal?
I guess I would defer that to Joe.
We're co-inhibited from considering those factors in awarding the contract.
But we are not prohibited from asking the question?
No.
So we know what they're?
But if you ask the question and you don't use the information, I mean, the question, the information from the question would be stored elsewhere, not, it wouldn't be used in the consideration of the choose. So you have the record of it, the record keeping purposes, but you're not allowed to use that information to make the decision. So we could, we could require them to check that box.
Right. So our?
It wouldn't help us.
It would help us when we get our full report. Once a year, it would help us be more accurate and a more complete picture, which would be a good thing. And it's state legislation that prohibits us from using that in awarding contracts, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you.
Okay. Vanessa, call the roll.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee DeVarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Leo?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Tab I, the Crane Liberal Arts Replacement Project. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation for the Crane Liberal Arts Building?
So moved.
Moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this? All right. Hearing none, Vanessa call the roll.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary, Trustee DeVarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Leo?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Tab J. The Business Education Building Fan Terminal Units Replacement Project. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Support. Any discussion on this? Okay. Vanessa, call the roll.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee DeVarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Leo?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Tab K. The Police Academy Equipment. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Any discussion on this one? Okay. Vanessa, call the roll.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee DeVarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Leo?
Yes.
Moving on to Tab L. Renaming of Campus Building. Well, okay, we have to discuss. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion here? Because I have a concern. We put it off once so that other people could be here. And now people aren't here again. You know, and I just feel bad about that. You know what I mean? How does anybody feel about putting off again? It's not that, you know, we're not going to do it. It's just we really wanted it to be a group thing, you know?
Yeah.
And I don't know.
Is Damon going to be here in December?
Are you still here in December?
Still here.
You're still here in December. Good.
I just, I'd like, just for the record, so everybody is aware, this is to name a building after our longtime staff member, Damon Flowers. And our longest-serving trustee, Diana McKnight-Morton, is not, was not, is not here. And she, for those that don't know, she recently lost her mother. And so she couldn't, can't be here tonight. And out of courtesy to her and to Rick Landau, another long-serving member, we postponed it last month. I'd be comfortable if Damon Flowers is going to be here next month to postpone it again because I think it's really, would be a sign of respect to Diana for her to be able to participate in the vote to name this building after Damon. So that's how I feel unless there's some strong reason not to do that, I would prefer to do that.
All right. I feel bad because he knows it's coming. But we really wanted everybody to be here. So I would prefer to postpone it if everybody's okay with that. I would really like Diana to be here and, you know. Any words that people want to say and all that?
So procedurally?
Yeah, procedurally, I'm not sure how to proceed if we want to postpone this.
We could table it to the next meeting.
File a motion to table.
File a motion to table it.
I move that we table this till the December meeting.
Is there a second?
Support.
Support? Okay. All in favor of tabling these, this agenda item to December? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. All right. Then we're going to move on to new business then.
Have we ordered the signage or?
We ordered it. We ordered it, right?
We ordered it? Okay.
It was supposed to be a surprise.
Surprise!
Aw, man. Okay. All to Tab M.
I thought you had to give a million dollars to this.
All right. Revisions to Policy 3046, the college degree structure. So this is discussion tonight. VP Hearn, do you want to say anything?
So if you look at under Tab M, there are certain, there are specific cross-outs in the proposed changes to this college degree structure policy. And basically, the changes align with the Michigan Transfer Agreement, general education changes that we made two months ago. And so we just had to change the date from 2010 to 2018. And then we also removed the minimum credit numbers being listed on number three in the second section and the third section. So this just better aligns with the changes we made to the general education requirements. And then not including those numbers will keep us from not needing to change this again if we make another change. So just making sure that the board policies are consistent.
Any questions on this?
Do you think that these changes will increase the number of completers?
Yes, I do think it will increase the number of completers because we actually do see some students currently leaving. We see students leaving early for a lot of reasons, not just because of the additional requirements that we have. But the computer requirement was a big one that was keeping students from actually completing a degree here. And they would transfer, I'm saying transfer loosely, they would just leave and go to the four-year institution right away. So we're hoping this increases the number of completers that we have. There's some other reasons that students don't complete and transfer early. And we're digging into those, those scenarios right now and trying to figure those out.
Thank you. Any other questions on the policy? Okay. Moving on to Tab M then. The Contract Change Order for Simplex Grenelle.
VP Flowers, you want to say anything?
Sure. This is, sort of completes the third phase of the lockdown project. As you look at the amount of $20,799, so this project is $799 over what is required based on board policy for the board to act on this. And so the policy for change order is 10% or $20,000, whichever is greater. So this is just about $800 greater than is required for your action. So the reason we have this change order is because we had a number of areas, as we've kind of gone through the project and the various buildings, had, certain areas had larger spaces that required a second or in some cases, a third lockdown reader and/or an extension of additional cartridge. So going through the whole campus and eight buildings, we just ended up that we had more devices. We also, a couple areas that we didn't have initially in the initial design that we added. And so this is a net add based on the engineering and the design and the cost of products and installation. This change order is $20,799 to Simplex's $166,000 original contract.
Any questions for Damon? Anything? Okay. All right, then. That concludes the new business. We are going to adjourn to move into closed session and to discuss pending litigation. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment?
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Call for meeting back to order. This is the Fall Board of Trustees Retreat. Vanessa, will you call the roll, please?
Chair of Board of Trustees, Vice Chair Fleming?
Here.
Treasurer Milliken?
Here.
Trustee Leo?
Here.
Trustee Hatcher?
Here.
Trustee Leo?
Here.
We're going to start with the capital outlay overview. Is this pretty much all your show?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Go ahead.
And also bills at the end.
Oh, okay.
And we do have the vice presidents and the deans here that are, that have direct input into this. Okay?
Okay. So we're going to start with the brief overview of the capital outlay process. It's, it's been almost nine years since a college has had a capital outlay project. We've got some new board members and we've got the advanced transportation project. So we thought this would be kind of a good introduction, kind of start the retreat off with this kind of a brief overview of the process. So typically, we have, as the board knows, every fall, we submit the five-year capital outlay request plan. And along with that plan, we typically have a requested project. Some years, we don't have a project. But if we do have a project, that's a kind of a separate portion of the submittal. And as you can see, it's typically has to be at least a $1 million expenditure to be a capital project submittal. And if it is, and we have one, that request goes to the state budget office. State budget office approves a project. If they approve the project, it goes to part of an authorization bill. And once that bill is approved by the legislature and the governor signs it, the college or university has the first step in going down the path of completing that project. And what that first part is, is the planning and schematic design. So once the project is approved and authorized, the college or university has 24 months, two years after the approval, after the governor signs it, at the end of that fiscal year which the project was authorized. So we have the case of the ATC until October of 2019, just to do the schematic design. Now, the state, unlike the college projects, has a number of steps that we would not normally have. And so it's a little more involved. And they are a lot more involved, the state budget office, as well as the Department of Management and Budget. And so the first part that they look at is, do we have a competitive process to selecting the, just selecting the design for the schematic design? And they're going to want to see, typically, they want to see the schematic or the RFP for the schematic design proposal, and they want to approve it. They want the college to submit a letter describing what that process is and how we went about it. And so after that, the program statement is submitted to the Office of Facilities in DTMB along with the Joint Capitality Commission. And if they approve it, it goes into yet another Appropriations Act. And it's at that point that we get funded for the project. So two-step process. First step, getting the authorization for planning. Next step, to get authorization for construction. But the state is very clear about the fact that there's no guarantee that the college or university will get funded for that second part.
Are we matching funds or are we just getting state funds?
This isn't a match. So colleges, community colleges are funded 50% of the project, the submittal university's 75%.
So on the schematics, if they approve it, we're in for 50%. They're in for 50%.
For the project they're funding. When we get the authorization for schematic design, it's at that point, 100% of the college is dying.
To do the schematics?
Correct.
And then when we get to this point where we're at right now, when you're just with the JCOS and the authorization there, then we're in 50/50?
For the project. That just means that they approve the project to move forward through construction and completion.
And they, at that point, if they approve the 50%, that they'll match us? They'll go 50/50 with us?
If we get past a second appropriation. So as I said, we, if we're approved through Joint Capitality Subcommittee, we get the Appropriation Act passed and... Morning, Ken.
Did you say we haven't done this for seven years?
Almost nine.
And what was it for?
The occupational education and the landau was a combined two-building project in 2009.
See what I said about the binder?
Always got to have a backup.
There you go.
Yeah. While he's, is that okay with you?
Yeah, so we're on. At that point, we have something, there's a project management agreement that the college enters into with DTMB, and that project management agreement typically is to determine whether or not we're going to manage the project or if the state's going to manage the project. Now, historically, at least for WCC, we've managed the project. Really, the only difference is, is that the state is going to charge us more if they manage the project. It's 1.5% of the total project budget if they manage it, 1% if we manage it. But there's a caveat in that that I'll get to in a moment as to why we're going to probably, well, not probably, we will pay more than that 1% for ATC.
Why? Because you're leaving?
No, I was telling you now. The reason is because there's a minimum, there's a minimum, this is, I'll keep saying this, this is, the ATC is a small project. And so, the minimum fee that they charge for any capital outlay project is $75,000. So, for a $4 million project, say, well, why isn't it $40,000 instead of $75,000? Well, that's why, because it's a minimum cost. And so, the 75 on this size project is almost 2%. So, it's still better than having the state manage the project because they have four project directors for the entire state and the likelihood of them being very attentive to us, given their other projects across the state and limited resources, it's probably better for us to manage it. Schools that don't have the skill sets or the staff to do it typically would, or smaller schools would go with the state to manage it. But as I said, in our case, we haven't, at least for my tenure here, we've not had the state manage our project. So, so at that point, where we've got a project management agreement, the community college then has a number of deliverables that we've got to submit to DTMB, one being that we own the property, that we've got our share of the funds to do the project in a certified letter. So, Bill, we would look to you to make sure that we have our $2 million. We typically submit copies of deeds and the boundaries of the campus to let them know that we own the property. In the case of our project, we're going to have to do a phase, what's called a Phase One Environmental Survey, which is part of EPA requires that. There's an ASTM standard that sets up what the criteria is for that. Typically, they're looking for if we have any contaminations in the site that we're going to put this project on, just as a little history, we did have for the Gundermirin Building because that was the site of our old power plant. We did have underground storage tanks and we did not only a Phase One Environmental Survey, we did a Phase Two Environmental Survey. I don't anticipate that for this project, but you never know. I mean, that's typically, when we were outside and we saw that green area, grassy area mound of birm with the trees on it, nothing, to my knowledge, has ever been built there, so there's likely nothing to be concerned about there. But we still have to incur the cost for that survey. So, we're going on to page six. So, the design firm is then working on the preliminary design documents along with DTMB Facilities Office. They're doing a review as our design firm is working on it. They will approve the preliminary design documents and we'll get a letter to that fact if they've approved the documents. They will then tell us if, in fact, we can go on to what's called final design and construction documents. There's a letter that goes to both the state building authority and to the state budget office from the Office of Facilities telling them that yes, Washna has been approved to go on to the final step. So, then, our design firm is working on the final documents. DTMB is reviewing where we are along the way, the bidding documents, they're looking at our bidding procedures and how we did the project. We want to make sure that we're paying prevailing wage on the project, or will be. They're going to review those bid documents once they're submitted through our purchasing office. And they're going to want monthly design progress reports. And then, finally, they'll look at giving us a final letter to proceed to final design. Again, that letter goes to DTMB, state building authority and the budget office. And when we get the bids back, we'll send those, the bid tabulation, to the DTMB Facilities Office. They'll review our bid documents again and have us present both, all the activity month by month during the construction procedure, meaning change orders, schedules, cash flow, expenditures. And so, we will be working with BP Johnson's office as far as, on the expenditure side, we'll be looking at giving the state every month, every 30 days, an overview of the project, where it is, how many change orders, progress report on the construction as it's going along. So, these will be bound reports every 30 days for the duration of the project. They will come and possibly monitor the project as we go forward. Again, with a limited staff, that's likely not to happen. They may come once or twice, twice. My experience is that they come only a couple of times during the entire time for the project. And they, at the very end there, the last bullet, they do remind us that we may not get our money until at least 12 months after what's called substantial completion. And substantial completion is a term in the construction and architectural field, which means you have beneficial occupancy of the space and you've got at least temporary certificate of occupancy. You can use it, but it's not quite finished. You still have punchless items and deliverables from the contract. So, we could theoretically, and this has happened with the last project, we were well into, well past the 50% mark before we got any money back. So, it depends on when they sell the bonds. And they're typically not that swift on selling the bonds necessarily. So, I think we were almost three-quarters into the project before we started getting money back. So, just something to think about. And then, we submit a, what's called an issuance of a certificate of tenant ability, which basically says we paid all the bills for the project, the contractor's pays, there's no liens, of course, there wouldn't be any liens on a public property project anyway. But then, everything is paid off and that the project is ready for use. So, that's sort of the short version of the capital outlay project. Any questions?
So, if we go into this saying that this is a $4 million project and we expect $2 million back from the state, if the bids come in at $4.5 or $5 million, are we still going to get 50% back?
Well, they're not going to approve a project that's over.
That's over.
This cannot, I mean, we can, and we have, gone back to the state for expanding a capital project that was authorized at dollar X and we want it, you know, Y.
X plus something.
Yes. And they've granted that. I mean, but they have...
If it comes in under, we don't have to do that.
The legislature's still going to have to approve that amount, even though it's our money. They're going to have to approve. We just cannot spend more money than the authorization that it's ours to spend.
Well, I'm not worried, I'm more worried about getting reimbursed.
They're not going to approve a project over the authorized amount until there's, at least, there's an agreement that, that overage is covered or that the legislature has agreed to authorize, even though it's our money.
So, when we, in the past, when this has happened and it's come in that we want to add, make it X plus Y, has our experience been that they authorize a match where they're in for 50% of the new amount?
No.
So, that's all our amount. Any overage is going to be us.
But they have to approve.
But they need to okay it?
Yes.
Even if we have the money?
Correct.
Have there been projects around the state that they've refused to approve? And we've already sunk, and the college or whoever it is that's doing this process has already sunk money into the schematics and everything?
Not to my knowledge, certainly, not my experience here. Other colleges, I mean, they've got that clause in the authorization that they clearly tell you, you may not get authorized for construction. And so, everything up to that point is your expenditure. So, you're gambling a little bit that it's going to go to the next step. I mean, the design fees on whole are considerably less, obviously, than construction. So, at the very least, you're going to be out, you know, $100,000 as opposed to millions of dollars.
Okay, let's say this is, I'm totally theorizing here, we want to do this project at $4 million. They say, okay. Bids come in, now it's $4.5 million. They say, we're not going to okay that.
We're going to have to value engineer it to get it back to $4 million.
Or we could say, or we could say, it's worth it to us that we spend that $4.5 million with no...
They have to approve it.
But we still have to go back and get another...
What if they don't approve it? Can't we just like say we want to spend the money and do the project?
No. Because we're already down the path of a cap, not, you know, if we want reimbursement. We could certainly, we could do the whole project without the state's involvement at all.
But once we've started on this path, they can tell us, no, you can't do it?
You can't add more.
Without a new construction authorization by the legislature.
Even if we say we want out of this process?
Well, then, you don't get your $2 million.
Well, I understand that.
If you're saying, could we opt out after we get bids that are beyond the authorization? Could we say, no, we don't want, we don't want...
I mean, I understand there'll be a cost to us, but I'm theorizing that if we decide it's so valuable, so important to our mission, that we want that, even if the state won't let us do it?
We could say, no, we don't want, we want to release the state from, because we're not signing anything at that point as far as, I mean, we're giving them affidavits or certifications that we have our share and that we're going to proceed with the project. But I would imagine we could opt out before the state's had any sort of skinning again.
And then, we could just... I mean, I'm not going to say we don't want your $2 million.
You're asking questions.
But I'm just asking theoretical questions that if there came, I'm trying to understand this whole process that's a state process. And theorizing that there may come a time that we want to do a project on our own, we'd like to get reimbursed by the state, but if they're not able to reimburse, if they won't authorize us, we may want to do the project anyway.
Right. We never may.
Yes.
We only apply for projects that we would like to do anyway.
I understand.
Does that make sense?
But we may want to, there may be some of us on the board that want to do it for $2 million, do this $4 million project...
Oh, right, sure, I get it.
For $2 million of our money. And, but not for $4 million. And there may be others on the board that want to do the project, even if it costs us the whole $4 million. So, I'm just trying to figure out where that falls. And, you know, each board member is going to bring their own opinion to that. And for some of us, it may be, hey, if they're not in for $2 million, I'm out. And for others, we may be willing to say this project's important.
Well, an example would be if we could have theoretically a project on, as our priority one project for years, and it gets either not approved through the governor's staff as the state budget office, because they ranked the project to submit it to...
And then, we put it in the following year.
Yeah, I mean, we put it in the following year. So, we could go year after year after year, and we may have a very important project to the institution and it's not getting through at least at a high enough level in the matrix that the governor uses to rank the project, because we were ranked with five and six.
Yes, we were.
And we got kind of elevated a little higher to get authorized this round. But it could be, we could have a project that gets denied for multiple years and then the board could decide, this is an important enough project, we're going to go, you know, without regard to capital outlay because we're just not getting approved and this is taking too long.
Right now, the ATC is, has the initial approval.
Correct.
So, we're on the path for the ATC and we put in, put it in as a $4 million project.
And we're going to talk about that in the next group of slides. So, Juan, could you advance to the next...
Thank you very much.
Project number one, I think on...
Good question.
Number one, yes. Speaking of the advanced transportation, I'm going to go through the, where this is now and what we see as the kind of process going forward to get this up and running. So, Governor Snyder has enacted a public act or signed Public Act 107 of this year to give us the authorization to do the planning and schematic design. As I said just a moment ago, it's two, there's two steps to this process, and so, we've got step one, you don't have step two. So, we're into the step one. So, we've got the RFP developed, written, it's issued. What happens now is we send it to the state to review the RFP to see if everything is okay. We'd like to proceed in our proceeding with issuing the RFP to the design professionals. Now, normally, we would have board input here. We would have one or two board members on the selection committee. And we would have the board discuss the capital fund, increase it for the project, approving the capital fund amount. Again, this, we've listed $4 million, but this, of course, is a $2 million share, but we need to have $4 million. Again, because most of, a lot of this money's going to be spent past our half and the reimbursement's going to come later. The board would approve the design professional and we'd have the design professional complete the program statement and schematic design. We would like to suggest, or at least recommend, if we could, because of the timing, to expedite this and not have, if the board would consider allowing the administration to select the design professional, and here's the reason why. We have been told, and President Blanca, myself, and Kirk Prophet went to Lansing to discuss with the state budget office along with DTMB, what the process is, what we had to do to kind of move this project forward. And so, what we were told is we really need to get our project, our schematic design, done, submitted, and on their agenda for Joint Capitality Subcommittee by, at least by April 1st of 2018. So, 2018 is an election year. We have a governor who is going to be lame duck towards the end of the year. And we have members of Joint Capitality Subcommittee, both on the House and Senate side, who may or may not be a term limits. So, there's going to be a bit of flux in 2018. And so, the concern is if we don't get our project in in a timely manner, who knows what's going to happen? This could be delayed. The next governor could say, we're not, we're going to put a halt on all projects until I have a chance to sit down and see what's what within the state, you know, state government, state's budget. So, then, subsequent to that conversation that we had in, this was September, with the state officials, subsequently, Kirk Prophet has contacted us and said, you really need to get your project in even before April 1st. So, given those timelines, given how much time it's going to take to do the schematic design, if we went through this process and had a committee and had the board included in the selection and the time it takes with everybody's schedule, this could be well into next year, before, late January or maybe February, before we even get started. The way the RFP is written right now, I've got it set up so it's going to be complete, submitted by December 19th. We could have a, it shouldn't take a lot, and this is only the schematic design, it's not the preliminary design, it's not the construction documents, it's only the portion of the schematic program, which is, wouldn't even rise to the level of being offered, being needed by the board to approve based on the dollar amount. This should be under $50,000 for the fees for this. So, I just ask the board to consider that, if we could appoint the firm, because they would have, have to have the project, the schematic design done by the end of February, early March, would be probably the earliest they could get it done, if we appointed them December 20th. That's pushing. But I think it's doable. But if we wait, there's, it's iffy now because it's, we're into the next, next year, next, you know, into January, and they may be into, you know, late March before they're done. So, we may miss our windows almost. So, it's just something, I'm not asking the board to decide tonight, but I'm just kind of bringing that up as a possible outcome that we could consider.
To think about for next month.
So, the RFP goes out now and the selection of the firm to do the schematics, and that can be done for $50,000?
It could be under $50,000. I don't think it would be under $50,000.
So, we're, when we're putting the RFP out, we're asking for... So we're, when we're putting the RFP out, we're asking for, we're asking, we're not giving them a number to shoot for, are we?
No.
We're just asking them to tell us what you're gonna do and how much it's gonna cost.
Based on, they've got to understand, and all the firms that, that are on this list are firms that are familiar with the capital supply. This is a unique process, so.
Right.
It's not, I mean, there's a lot more deliverables, a lot more work on the architect's part than a normal, like the project, the student center project, or the Morris Lawrence project. These are different requirements, there are more requirements than a normal construction project.
So they're gonna build that into their cost?
They'll absolutely.
Where, you're, where do we have to sign off on the four million dollar commitment? When do we have to sign off on that?
I think we have some.
Are you asking to sign off before April 1st on that?
No, I think we have some time, and we've had some brief discussions about that. I think as we get into the latter part of the fiscal year, towards the end of the fiscal year, I think we'll be, because until we start spending that money, truly no need to, you know, once the architect gets through schematic design and gets into the preliminary planning, and now, at some point, we're gonna have to approve, the board will have to approve the design fees, which I think are gonna be upwards of 175,000 dollars.
Are we doing a flat design fee or a percentage of the contract?
It's gonna be flat.
Is anybody else doing this? Building one of these?
Building an advanced transportation? No, this is, this is.
No, this is it.
So this, like, appropriation was just for us, right?
Yes, it was.
Well, there were other schools that.
The governors.
But the governor.
There's other capital.
Remember?
The capital outlay.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it was really unique how this occurred.
Yeah, very unique. Why wouldn't we do this?
I don't know.
Any reason why we wouldn't do this?
Not that I can think of.
I mean, it sounds to me like it's like.
Cutting edge stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds to me like, this is like, in four million bucks, it's kind of a steal. What, per square foot, what does that work out to be then?
Well, if you include everything, I mean, it's probably upwards of $300. When you include the fees, I mean, not just the constructions, just everything.
Sure.
But, you know, not only does it add, the advanced transportation center, not only is it for that addition, but what it does is it brings up the value, I think, of the whole occupational education center. Because, I don't mean in terms of real estate dollars, but now, all of a sudden, it's like advanced transportation, you're like in a whole new, you know, you're going into a whole different dimension than just occupational education. So, you know what I mean, it's.
Yeah, the, the thing that I, you know, again, I, this sounds, the thing that I, the place that you envision putting this is so, I mean, not to be symbolic, but I mean, obviously that statue, that gateway statue was sort of a, you know, emblematic part of the, of the community college. It really ends up being front and center in what we present to the public as to who we are. And I think that's a good thing about, because I think this does signify for people in Michigan, and for people in southeastern Michigan, for people in the automobile industry, that we are the community, go-to community college for this stuff. The only thing I think of is that, you know, what happens if it tanks? What happens if it doesn't work? What happens if, I mean, it ends, but I suppose, and, and the question I would have for you, Damon, is, I mean, again, if it didn't work out, is this space usable for anything else other than an advanced transportation?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So this is like good space?
Yeah, I mean, it's lab and it's computer labs, and we'll get into the, the programming, because we've already really kind of started a little bit of the program, programmable spaces within the space, and I'll show you some examples.
Okay, that's great.
But that's a really good question, so I just want to add one thing. You know, we did that assessment, the campus utilization study.
Right.
And what we found in the utilization study is that we do need more space like that. We have a lot of space, but we could, so if it, God forbid.
Yeah.
Yes, we could use it.
But I mean, it could be, it is, it's gonna be so dedicated to this particular, that this kind of educational space is usable for, for other purposes within the, within the community.
Yeah, and even the lab space, as you'll see, I mean, these are intended, in this, at least in this part of the building, we set up the OE, where we have the automotive and the ABR and the auto service, where the, you know, true auto work is going on. Here, this is more clean lab, I mean, so these could be converted to other functions other than having cars, necessarily, at least whole cars in the labs.
Okay, that's my, that's my question.
Okay, so, another question.
Once, the, so if this goes forward and the board says, fine, we trust you, and you select a design professional, is that the design professional that carries through to the end of the project, or is that just for the schematics?
Well, it doesn't have to, we specifically, specifically ask for cost for schematic design and for the other phases. And so, we made it clear that it's no guarantee that the firm that gets the schematic design necessarily does the whole thing. I mean, there's some.
There's problems.
Logic to it, because, because once you've done the schematic, you really have a sense of the project, what the college is looking for, and they've got a kind of a good sense of the program, and putting it together. The only, because the other phases are really just embellishment of the schematic design. And once you've done the schematic, you've really kind of done the, you're just kind of building on that, and you're doing more technical drawings for construction beyond that. Now, could anybody, could somebody else do that? Yes, they could. And we sort of set it up that way with what you just said in mind. But the likelihood, I think we'd lose some momentum if we kind of switched to another firm.
So the approval of the design professional may be pro forma. You've got here, after the board approves, four million dollars, the board approves the design professional, there's a strong likelihood that we'll be likely, whoever's doing the schematics is gonna have the inside track, be the design professional.
Because they would have met with the, you know, with the.
Right, I understand that.
Leadership, they would know what the program is, and they would know what the spatial relationships are, they would basically kind of done the design, done the heavy lifting so to speak. Because beyond that is really, like I said, technical work beyond, beyond.
I do think that the design of something like this has to be pretty well thought out, because I mean, this will be, I mean, this four million dollars sounds honestly to me kind of light for something like this.
It is.
And, you know, and, I mean, this is gonna be sort of a landmark gateway kind of building. So how, I mean, it can't look like a Quonset hut, you know? Has to, has to look like something.
This is gonna be a high profile.
Yeah, so I mean, four million for something like that is.
Yes.
But I mean, I suppose it's only 10, the way you say, how many square feet is that?
Twelve thousand.
Thousand, it's not a huge building.
You know, you said you were gonna say that.
Yeah.
Just put it in context, it's, it's like one floor of.
Yeah, no, no, it's a, yeah, I, so, but I mean, it just really, it needs to look nice.
It does.
Do you already have an idea of a design professional you'd like to tap, or?
No, there are a number of firms, all are very good.
Let's see what they.
There's some that are very good in, in design, building envelope, and they're on the list. In fact, the firm that did Akead is on the list, who did the graphics, did the interior, so the themes by department, they're one of the, I think, seven firms we have listed.
So, does all of this stuff on this number three here have to happen before number two on the previous page? The second legislative approval? So the construction authorization comes after we do all this?
Yes.
And then we submit that to the state?
Well, we could, I mean, we could, I mean, the whole point of, of the acceleration, and I've mentioned as far as having the administrations select the firm.
Right.
Is to get to the construction authorization.
As quickly as possible.
Yes.
By April 1st.
Yes, or at least have it submitted. I'm not sure when the.
Or sooner.
State Budget Office will submit it to the Joint Capitality Subcommittee to get a legislative act, we don't know when that's gonna happen, but at least it's in the queue.
How do we look with our legislators in terms of, there's strong support of, of something like this?
Very strong.
Very strong.
Because we did sort of leapfrog some other projects.
You did, you did leapfrog.
So we do have, certainly the governor is in support of this very strongly. So the next steps, similar to what I mentioned, just, you know, certainly applies to the ATC as it did just generally, that the project goes through state budget office for approval in Joint Capitality Subcommittee, and the legislature, number five, is gonna approve us for final design through an appropriations act, and we're gonna sign a project management agreement that says we're gonna manage the project. And the whole construction phase, we'll go through all those listed items, and we go through our bidding process. Again, every step of the way, we submit to the facilities, sign director of DTMB for approval of everything, and ultimately, they're going to grant us construction, and we submit all of the construction information as far as reports, change orders, all of that, and at the end, we have a completed project and submit for approval.
Your sense of when we get to number seven, if we do this accelerated, where the, we put in for the authorization for us to award the contract? What's our timeline on trying to get to this? At the bottom of, to complete number seven?
I, I've got a timeline, just in a few more slides, that kind of describes what the.
And then what's the, what's our cost, what's our commitment of dollars to get to this point, to the end of number seven?
We haven't started, we're still into preliminary design, we still have this, the design fees.
Right.
The entire design fees, we're getting close to having those completed, so.
Less than $100,000?
No, no, it'll be probably closer to 200,000.
200,000.
Because at that point, we'll be done with the construction documents.
So they'll be ready, we'll have the documents, the bid documents, basically, that we can send out to bid.
At that point, we'll have legislative appropriation and all of that, so, yeah.
We should have the legislative approval for construction prior to us finishing the construction documents.
Right, oh, okay.
So this is a preliminary outline of what discussions with the deans, with the E.P. Hearn's and the administration of what kinds, as well as E.P. Mueller, of what kind of spaces we might have in this 12,000 square feet. So we talked about active classrooms, some wireless vehicle technology labs, material science labs, couple CAD CAM labs, large flexible multidisciplinary laboratories, and some meeting and display convening spaces. It's a little hard to read, but, if you look at your, look at your handout rather than what I'm pointing, but the little green spot is the addition of when we were out walking, that's, that's the northwest corner of the OE building. And, again, looking at.
It is currently a berm.
Yes. It's.
Magnifying glass.
Yeah. So if you look at the, the potential other locations that, and I mentioned that probably this is the best location for, and I'll give you the kind of my reason, because we have Great Lakes right here to the east, you can't really put, put it on this side, because we have the power lines, we have a 90-foot eastment that's granted to ITC. So we can't put it on the eastment, we can't put it to the south in the campus green, because we have all the geothermal wells. And plus, that would be a, you know, we couldn't get access, it wouldn't have any visibility back there, we can't get a vehicle back there.
And the green is really a nice feature.
And that's a nice green space that we use for outdoor events. We can't put it here just opposite OE, there's another green space there, but we also have geothermal wells there as well. And the only other place would be in the plaza where the bookends, the sculpture is, and I don't think we want to destroy the entry point of the campus to put it there. So really, this is the only space that, that at least I believe that it's really viable. Now, we've got.
It goes to frame the entryway.
It's kind of nice.
It does, actually, yeah. I never even noticed that personally.
Yeah, the berm is actually the green area, it's a very large area.
It is.
Yeah, so we're gonna lose maybe, I think at least my guesstimation is about 75 parking spaces if we go this location. But we are gonna have Albert Kahn, who is, as you know, has been commissioned to prepare our master plan update, since this is gonna impact both vehicular and pedestrian traffic for campus, have asked him to look at, just take another look, just another pair of eyes to see, okay, is there something I missed in this location? And so I think that'll be kind of a, a good exercise for them to kind of tell us if, or confirm that this location is.
Relatively accessible to the parking structure, actually. It's not a long walk from over there.
No, I mean, it's, the parking structure's here.
Right. Yet you could go internally all the way to, you could walk indoors through SCB and still get out to, it'd only be outdoors to get through from SCB to OE if you were parked in the parking structure.
Yes.
Yes.
Do, by your evaluation of our parking needs, do we need to replace those spaces?
No. The parking structure more than made up for, I mean, we don't use, this, we have this parking lot two that I'm pointing to right here in the corner on the curve.
Right.
Is really a storage location right now.
Yes.
We, we don't use these spaces literally at all. And we could, and we don't use a good portion of lot three to the east, easternmost portion of lot three. So the parking structure really helped us as far as the parking issues, and it's even at a peak time, at the beginning of summer.
I know, I haven't taken classes in the last year and a half, but there were a couple times when I had to turn around and go back out, the parking structure was full.
Yeah, it does get full.
So, that's why I'm asking that question, just from personal experience.
Given all the spaces we have, we have.
I mean, I did find.
Close to 5,000 spaces on campus.
Okay. One other question. So I'm looking at this, I just did a quick addition, and with all of these, I added up the spaces 11,800 square feet, which is close to your 12,000.
Yeah, and that's.
But is there mechanical requirements, bathrooms, things like that?
There's certainly gonna be circulation, and that's kind of, kind of gross, gross square footage, so we've got to take into factor, those are kind of just, those aren't, you know, those aren't the architect's program, yes. We may, we may end up changing the quantity, the size of those spaces almost certainly during the schematic design.
Would that green space that you've looked at on that map, would it support more than 12,000 square feet? If the designer decided that it needed it in order to meet all these needs?
Well, as long as it didn't go over the 4 million, I mean, obviously, as you add square footage, you add.
Cost, cost, right.
Just, how, where did that 4 million figure come from?
Okay.
I looked to my right, for a reason.
So Dr. Blanca just sort of figured out with your architectural expertise and knowledge of advanced transportation.
Yeah, I think that was.
It was a good.
Well, remember, it was, it was 12 and a half million initially.
Trying to figure everything out.
Right.
Looking at the utilization study, I knew we didn't need a building, so, but we do need, we do need this.
Yeah, I don't know.
Ideally, probably, we'd like it bigger, but, you know.
Well, we went from, from 30,000, which was the original plan.
Right, right.
To 12.
To 12, right.
Right, right.
Because we repurposed a lot of space from ABR, right? We've shrunk ABR.
We did a lot in there.
And we were able to put advanced manufacturing in the, in the ABR space.
Just don't know that you can build this for 4 million dollars. I mean, I.
It's not gonna be, and I keep saying, it's not, this is gonna be a small bill, addition.
Yeah, okay. Now, is that 4 million dollars like net of like computers and equipment and all that stuff, or that's like?
Total project.
The whole project.
The only way we've historically kind of gotten more, we've used the, the equipment line, if, just through normal capital, if kind of for capital project, we've purchased more equipment through our normal operating capital process, budget process, for equipment only. But we haven't, we have not added to the project overall.
Okay.
Bill?
Four, 4 million bucks, right?
4 million.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's my advisor.
It's really two.
It's really two million.
Let's be clear that I factored in the extra two when questioning affordability.
Okay.
Were there any, did anybody at the state level give us guidance that 4 million would be a doable number from their perspective?
No, that's not.
So that didn't help track?
But based on our experience, your experience, and your team's experience, you think we can do this for 4 million? can do this for 4 million and?
I mean, you're sort of backing into it, we can make any, we can make anything work. But once you know what the budget is.
Yeah, 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 of course, yeah, you can back into it.
It's just, it's going to be, you know, could it be bigger? Yeah, but it would cost more.
Yeah, I get it, okay.
So I just kind of threw this in, this is an arrow shot behind the fitness center.
They're building houses in Barton Hills for 4 million.
And they might be 12,000 square feet.
They might be.
So again, here's the site, it's literally right here in that green area, parking lot three, in the plaza. So just some of the kind of visioning, some of the things that could go on in this 12,000 square feet. The entry lobby could have a video wall that could display what's going on in the building, what kind of activities there are, could be interactive, could be an ongoing display with the visuals changing and digital displays that change what's, or indicates what's going on or what's coming up in the building. These are just kind of visioning, visioning ideas. Typical active learning classroom or collaborative classrooms, we have a couple on campus in LA and in VE. You can see students that collaborating in larger groups or in the back where there are only a couple of students. Convening spaces, again, these are kind of collaborative, some lounge space, sometimes it's tables in a larger collaborative space, or it could be kind of glass enclosed kind of meeting spaces. So, or small group meeting spaces. This might be one of the labs in the space. Again, not necessarily a vehicle in the space, but maybe testing materials or lightweight kind of material chambers. Material science lab potentially, again, no vehicles shown yet. Then we'll get into wireless vehicle technology lab, where you do have a vehicle, or clean vehicle lab, where there's autonomous either equipment or devices being installed or repaired or installed in the vehicles. And it may be a simulation.
Lot, 4 million, okay? They're doing a lot with small houses now, have you seen that?
Hey, listen, my wife and I think that RV things are starting to sound real good.
Let's look into a timeline for the project, I was thinking that Dr. Gervardi kind of brought up. So in the current fiscal year, we'd be looking at getting the A&E firm team appointed and assigned to the project, completing the programming and schematic design, submitting it to the state for approval, and hopefully, if not by the end of June, certainly into, you know, they're going to break, obviously, in June for the summer recess. When they come back, whether or not they're going to be inclined to bring forth the authorization project, we don't know. We'd like them to review it sooner rather than later, so. All the activities I mentioned earlier with the legislative approvals and the construction documents and so forth would be occurring in RFY 19. And by April, my best guess is that April of 19 would be the earliest that construction would start on this project. Based on its size, based on the logistics and the work, the site work that has to be done, there are water mains that have to be relocated that feed the Health and Fitness Center. We saw the large berm, there's a lot of earthwork to be moved around. And so this is probably about an eight or nine month project. If that holds, and this project would be completed by January of 2020.
Thinking about retiring, are you?
Thinking about it.
Can, can we make approval of this contingent, you staying just?
I was just about to make that proposal, Dave.
We need somebody with your skill base and skill set to kind of manage it. We could name this building after it.
Let's move on.
We could make a bid for project manager.
Come back as a consultant.
Yes.
Be a good retirement project.
He's going to miss this place.
He is.
This is like his home, he built the whole thing.
I know. He knows the tunnels, for Christ's sake.
I know.
Okay, let's talk about the budget. So, kind of broken this down at the levels that the state likes to see, line items. We know we're going to have some, we've got the Phase One environmental survey, so it's going to throw money in for that, guessing on the, you know, past experience of what the A&E fees for a project this size and the scope, actual construction, site improvements, again, that's moving the water line for the fitness center. This is a wild card, not in terms of amount, but in terms of time. Some board members may recall the difficulties we've had with Ann Arbor Township. The Health and Fitness Center took us eight months to get through site planning review alone. So every month that goes by that we don't have everything, every duck in a row that the township requests, then we're delayed a month. And so their planning commission only meets once a month, so if they don't like something, it gets deferred to the next meeting, so. We have not had great success with quick turnarounds with site planning.
And I think the fact that it's close to here on River Drive and has an appearance in the township is going to be something that they're going to take seriously, but you are eliminating parking spaces, and they like that part.
I think we can justify the, right, well, we're also adding impervious surface as well, so, I mean, this building may need to have a green roof, just to mitigate that.
It's disappearing, so you've got some impervious surface that's simply being replaced with the roof.
True. But some of that green belt area is going to go away as well, with the roof, so. It's something we just have to be cognizant of, that that's going to play a role in the timing of it. Again, I mentioned we're supposed to pay because we're managing the project, pay 1% that should be $40,000, allocated 75 because that's the minimum. So, again, because of the project size. Furnishings and equipment, this is a bit of a wild card, not sure exactly what the total equipment is going to be, because we really don't, you know, we haven't designed the lab, so we don't really know what's going to go in there, so. They require a minimum, again, the state, 7% for contingency, so I put the minimum in there, so. Add all this up, you get $4 million. Any questions about the ITC?
I think the chief who advised me about the 4 million is just sitting here so quietly.
Warren, could I ask you to advance to number two? Number two PowerPoint, not number two. Yes. Okay, we're moving on to the Student Center renovations, which we saw during the tour. So again, the purpose of this project is to kind of, a couple of things. Want to create kind of a front door to the Student Center building, which was lost when we eliminated that exterior monumental stair, and to gain, you know, better access and expand the services of our Student Services Division. And I mentioned that we haven't really done anything in the building, at least on the second floor of Student Center of significance, for almost 15 years. So the space is kind of showing its age, and, you know, we've added enrollment in the last 15 years. We're adding more services to students. We've added, you know, space in the, a lot of them's Veteran Center, which wasn't there, so we had to make room for that. And so now we have, you know, the added pressure of access to the second floor without having the stair. So what we'd like to do is, as a goal, is to kind of create a front door for the building, an identifiable new entrance, and rework that stair to the east, and I'll kind of explain what that means, what that reworking actually is. Expand the space on the second floor for Student Services into what is now Financial Services to the east, and then move Financial Services up to the third floor in underutilized classroom space. So that's, that's the goal of this project. And I wanted to show you this, for those who hadn't seen it, what this stair, this big monumental 90-foot-long stair looked like. And I know this is kind of a two-dimensional elevation, so you really can't get the depth, but it's, it's stairs on both sides, east and west, you could go underneath a bridge to the entrance, but you go up these stairs to one run to a landing, up another flight to a landing, and then up another set of steps, and you see the two pairs of doors up there, we now have windows. And I'm not sure what this was, I think it was maybe just a covering, it's an aluminum kind of cover over the entrance. And this, of course, was leaking, and it was chunks of concrete, as we saw with this building out, the entrance was falling down, so we had to put barriers so students wouldn't get hit with falling concrete. But it's just like bridges when you go over a freeway and it says, "Bridge may be icy", very similar thing, you've got warm air at the bottom and cold air on top, and so you have the whole freeze-thaw process, and it's just deteriorating over time. So when we did the first floor renovations, we demoed this entire thing, and now it looks like this. As I said when we were outside.
Was there a spiral staircase that's up?
Again, doors are gone, we replaced those with windows. What I think we didn't realize is that really how difficult it would be to navigate getting up to the second floor, how much, how really important that stair really was. And so we tried to kind of mitigate it by dressing up this, these are towers, these juxtaposed concrete objects here. But this was an exit stair only, it had this kind of a steel door with no handles, I mean, it was never meant to enter, it was only meant to.
Basically a pair of.
Yes, it was an exit stair. So you can see, you can't make it out in this picture, but there, you can see the white letters, we sort of tried to dress it up to let students know, okay, if you go through these doors, these are the services you're likely to stumble upon if you can make it up to the second floor and find them. But, so that helped a little bit, but it really didn't solve the problem. And so here's a, here's a revolving door, here's that stair and the double doors I mentioned. And so you have to kind of meander through the entire first floor if you can find the elevator over here, which is obscured by seating and students sitting in these lounge furniture and tables and chairs, or you go all the way to the south end and go back up the stairs, which is not a very good way to navigate to get to the services you want. So this is a proposed plan. This whole outside is pretty much all concrete. We had some greenery area, we had an elevator, a dedicated elevator just to go to the second floor. This elevator would not go to the third floor, because, and I'll explain why in a moment. We'd have a new entrance here, and we'd reposition this stair. Remember that the entry to the stair was out here, well, that would go away, we didn't have this stair actually dump into the first floor, we'd have the entry here, and this stair would be open, not enclosed. And we can do that, we think, with, by putting a fire shutter, very much what we did with the connection on the bridge between the Student Center and LA, to get around the fire regulation. Because you can exit two floors, we know that. This would eliminate, this would get students up to the second floor immediately without going through the kind of barrage of students who are in the food service area. This is kind of a blow up of that same area. Again, we kind of totally reconfigured the stair, get rid of the entry point out here, we had some greenery out here, we'd have a vestibule and entry point over here, some benches and greenery out here, and basically kind of open this up and have, either if you want to go up to the second floor from stairs, or if you need assistance and have the elevator, it's right there.
Should we again where the entrance is to all of this?
Right here. Right now, the revolving door is like right here.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're just moving it to the, to the west, a few feet.
And it will be, it'll be regular doors that.
Yeah, see, it'll either be a pair of sliding doors this week.
Okay.
So here's the second floor now, and again, as I said when we had the tour, if you came up the stairs, you're sort of faced with, okay, I really want to be over here, and everything, you know, 15 years ago was designed predicated on the basis that access would be from the north. But right now, you really can't, you're using this stair, and this is what I was talking about with changing the guts of the stair. The stair is such that you take, there's a landing every four steps, and then you make a turn and go up four more steps, then make a turn and go up four more steps, it's really kind of unusual. We would kind of gut that entire stairway and put a normal stair, you go up one rise to a landing and up another rise, and you're done. But it would, it would enter the space, the new stair, right here, and I'll see that in the next slide. But right now, what happens, when you come up the stair, you're faced with two doors. One door is to Financial Services, which is always locked. The other door is the one that students would come through, and they're faced with a wall as soon as they come through. And so it's really, it's really difficult, it's really, you know, if I were a student, I'd say, why do they do this to you? It's like torture, why are you going to go through all the hoops? Anyway, to get here. So coming up from the south is really not a very good solution, because everything is backwards. When you come up the stairs, you see counseling, and you see a counter with, you know, student resources, and neither one of those are services you want. Initially, as a new student, you want to be over here where enrollment services is, up here. And you have to go around this other large concrete stair, if you can even see what's going on over here, you have to kind of go around and kind of work backwards. So it's not a very good layout, again, based on the fact that that big monumental stair is gone. So what if we did this? If we open up that stair and have it enter, not to a wall, but right open into, what we hope will be eventually kind of a one-stop for Student Services and have student kiosk-type desk workstations out here, with somebody monitoring and working with students who need help, and those who don't can do the registration really almost on their own. What if we push back the cashier, which is now sticking out here, and reduce its size, get rid of the bulletproof windows, and have fewer, two or three stations as opposed to five? Move financial aid into this kind of tan area. Here's the proposed new elevator, this is at almost 400 square foot. New additional space we gain by doing this, sort of an overlook, this could be a conference space, this could be a convening space, it could be a counseling space, it could be any number of things, but it's a nice space with a nice view, and it could be any number of additional space that we sort of gained.
We could put the president's office.
Yeah, and a glass, very nice, surrounded by glass. Make sure I'm sitting right there?
First thing you see.
So we'd move financial aid, which is over here, financial aid is sort of cramped and landlocked right now, they can't really meet with students one-on-one, there's no space for that, but we'd move them over there, and we wouldn't really modify this wholesale necessarily, there are a lot of offices that they could use that are existing for Financial Services, we'd probably keep a lot of the perimeter offices near the windows, we'd add some additional space for transfer center, Linda, what else?
Thanks for student success.
Yeah, exactly.
Success coaches.
Right. And we'd kind of add some computer lab, Linda, you might want to explain the idea of this space just a little bit.
So as we noticed in, when we did the financial aid profile, we have been doing loan counseling with students. So right now, financial aid has to go and find different computer labs all over campus, because as part of that loan counseling, we log them into the, to their loan counseling site, they actually see how much money that they have borrowed, what the repayment plans are, what the options are, and so we would basically make that a small computer lab where it's for, it could be, where we have, do additional testing in there, we could do the financial aid loan counseling, and just when we have our express registration, right now, we're having to go, sometimes use the library computers, so it just allows us to do a lot of services.
What's there right now?
Financial aid.
Financial aid.
Financial aid's crammed in there.
Right.
Cramped, like really crammed.
Yeah, crammed. Yeah, cramped.
Is it crammed?
Cramped. So, and, you know, and then we could use, we could also use it for train staff. So we see that, we envision it as it would be, it would have glass where we could kind of close it off, but then we could open it up and serve students there when we're not using it for specific loan counseling.
Convening space.
Warren, I'm stuck again. Warren, I'm stuck again.
So the, just I'm trying to envision this a little bit. The, would you envision that the, that glass-in elevator would be the principal means by which people would access the second floor?
Well, as I said, the open, the stair that we're going to open up, and we...
So it's going to open up to the outside?
Not the stair.
The stairs, you're going to have to go into the building in the left to get to the stair.
Yeah, but as soon as you come in, the stairs right there to your left.
Stairs right there.
Yes, right there.
And we don't need those exits for fire?
We do, but you can exit through a lobby.
Okay.
So I think, we'll work around the building. I think we've managed, and we had discussions, we've eliminated discussions.
When I was up, did you mention what the purple is?
The purple is that, the actual new square footage. It's like 380 square feet. It's the space I was mentioning could be a...
President's office.
Yeah. It could be a meeting room, it could be a conference space, it could be a student study space.
Would the people on the third floor aren't going to be upset that the glass elevator doesn't go up there?
I think they'll be happy that it doesn't, because it would go right into the middle of Financial Services. I'm not sure they're going to want to have students going up in the middle of their door.
The staircase, are, is there going to be windows up as the...
Yes, and when we look at the, when we look at the renderings, you'll see, one of the views in the rendering shows windows.
You do open up that left side with a window, right?
Pardon?
You open up that left side of the staircase with a window that's not there right now?
Right.
Okay. You can bash through that reinforced concrete.
So we go to page 12, Warren is kind of updating the PC. Page 12, you'll see the added space. We actually gained, the project gains 380 square feet of actually new space for that conference space.
Yeah.
Page 13 is just an existing floor plan. Without the pointer, it's kind of hard to tell, but there are five classrooms that we would repurpose for both finance and for GED, because we're going to move the existing GED computer labs to another location, on the third floor, just kind of to a smaller space.
The new staircase would go up to the third floor?
Staircase has, it's an exit stair.
Okay.
It has to go to the third floor. So that wouldn't change.
And you say you can put those five classrooms someplace else, because they are...
We've already done, we've already done it for winter, it's already been done.
They're not underutilized, and they're scheduled pretty... But they're empty for winter.
They are now, because it's scheduled, scheduled around those locations.
Okay.
I mean, overall, I mean, because we put, because, because we have different modalities of class offerings now, classrooms overall are a lot more underutilized than what they were in the past. So even next semester, we moved faculty out of BE and those five classrooms offline, and we've still been able to maintain the same number of classes we ran last winter.
Okay.
So now you can see why we did it the way we did it. First, we did a campus utilization study, so we could see how we were utilizing the campus spaces. And then after we did that, that's when we started seeing where we could, what we really needed as we moved forward.
If you go to page 14, to the third floor, you'll see in green the spaces that would be consumed by Financial Services. And so looking at the square footage loss by moving from the second floor to the third floor, this is actually a little more square footage than they currently have. So we've kind of allowed there's some room to grow a little bit with Financial Services being upstairs on the third floor. And in yellow, you notice the elevator, the stair, that stair's got to stay, we still have access, we still need that exit stair for the third floor occupants. So we try to position, at least in green, in areas where Financial, or at least part of Financial Services already is, or at least the division is. So next to the...
There's not much structural change to the third floor other than that staircase.
That is correct. Yes.
Now, is the way the stairs are positioned within the stairwell going to be, the landing's going to be changed as well?
Totally, totally gutting the interior of this, because they're configured, almost like a spiral staircase.
Yeah, I know.
It'll be kind of what we call a single switchback.
Got it.
Up, landing, and up.
And that'll be the same up to the third floor?
Correct.
The testing center is still up here?
No impact on the testing center. The only areas that would be modified by the cost for this proposed project is what you see in green and yellow. Page 15 is just an existing shot of, kind of a head-on of what is now our front door. So on a bright sunny day, I mean, you can barely, you know, you can see the revolving door a little bit, but there's something there. You know, the word Student Center at the top, we're not there. I'm not sure you'd necessarily know that was the main entrance to the... Page 16 is a kind of an elevation, a graphical elevation of what we're talking about as far as elevator and that second floor meeting, potential meeting space above the entrance. 17 is sort of an angled view of the way it looks now. And then 18 is, is kind of a concept of what it could look like, with the glass elevator and with the door. 19 is just kind of a, kind of a broader angled shot of the scene.
The only thing that's really hard to envision for me is I don't, I can't quite visualize what the staircase would look like from the inside of the Student Center building. That's the one I'm having trouble with.
A straight run to a landing, and then another straight...
I mean, I'm just saying, when you go in the door and you turn left, just how that would look, I don't quite...
It might be, it's going to be an open stair.
It's going to be, yeah.
Without, without, we hope without doors. We hope if we, to get around the fire issue, to have a fire shutter.
Okay.
That the stair is open unless there's a fire, then, then that shutter kind of comes down.
Yeah.
We still have to have, we'd still have to have a pedestrian door, even in that shutter, because people have to exit from the upper floors through the lobby.
Sure. I'm sure it'll look nice, it's just hard to visualize.
It'll almost be more like BE. You walk in BE and there's an open stairway right up there.
Right.
Like that?
Yes, could be.
It won't be as wide as the existing south stair in the Student Center building?
It will not. No. No, that's more of a monumental kind of a access stair.
Will it be wider than the, because I went down that stair today, the existing stair on the north side, when I thought we were meeting in front of the Student Center building. So I went down that. It's a pretty tight, enclosed staircase to run a lot of traffic up and down. Will it be larger than it is now?
The outer walls, we're not going to do anything with the tower walls. We're going to make it as wide as we can within the, I mean, those towers are eighteen feet by eighteen feet, pretty symmetrical. So they're going to be like five, about five to eight.
Do we gain space by doing a two flight as opposed to four flights? Does that make it able to be wider?
It'll, it'll make it in terms of access in the occupant load going through the stair much easier than having all those turns. Because again, it's going to be just a straight run to a landing, and then another straight run to the next floor. As you can see on page 19, you can see, you had windows.
Building identity. Tonight was the first time I ever saw the Student Center sign on the building. It's so high that I think a lot of people don't read it or see it. It's like the Google Building in downtown Ann Arbor. On the fourth floor, it said "Google Building", but whoever read it. Might be something to consider as we go through the thought process.
Yeah, if you're, if you're driving along Hill River Drive, obviously it's almost a straight shot, again, because of the distance. But when you're up close, yeah, you're looking up.
If you're coming off the bus stop, it's harder to see.
You could just put a sign that says "Look up."
You could do that.
No wonder you're so well-paid.
Somebody asked about windows in the stair tower, and that's, that's a shot on page 19, in that stair tower, that we could bring some light into the dark stair tower.
There's, I'm looking at the windows there and that gained space on the second floor.
Which page are you referring to?
I'm on page 18, but then if you look back at page 12, I see that's 380 square feet. That, that's the, this right here is the gained space.
Yes.
Could that be our art gallery that we used to have?
It'd actually be lousy because you have windows there. You need walls for galleries.
True.
And no natural light.
And naturally, natural light is a bad thing.
That's bad for galleries.
Yeah, but you want, if you have natural light, you want it north.
And that is north.
That is.
I mean, the space isn't a sign, I mean, again, this is just a concept.
It's okay, I understand.
Is it still, Warren, is there any hope to, to this?
I think graphics in here are fine.
Yeah.
So 20 is a kind of looking, in the west looking east. 21's kind of a more angled view east towards, should be over there. On 23, talk about the timeline of just activities. And again, this is potentially a faster-paced project. Again, it's not a capitol, we don't have all the hoops to jump through as far as a state approval. So I did envision this to be done in a, in a phased construction, because you have to do the space for Financial Services first in the vacated classrooms, and we have to do, obviously, this existing Financial Services space on the second floor only after Financial Services moves. So that's Phase Two. And then at some point, Financial Aid has to move temporarily probably to the first floor of the Student Center building in our community room for a short period of time to do Phase Two-B. And then they move back, and it should be a short period of time. So going on to the next page, 25, you see the, kind of the activity allocation. There is some site work, there's a little outdoor work for the elevator and for the site work for the new entrance, new construction. About 9,000 square feet, about 4,500 square feet on the second floor of renovation, and about the same on the third floor. AD fees should be about 160. Just furnishings, equipment that may be needed, is kind of through, that's kind of the number that's in there as a placeholder. And again, a permit, these plan review, because this renovation should be relatively short with the township. And so I'm assuming we're going to need about two point, almost 2.5 makes for this project. Any questions about it? Then we'll move on. See Morris Lawrence. Hope you go to page three. So let's kind of give a little background to the, to the building. We know it's, in its 27th year, it's a lot of visitors, about 150,000 a year. It's our public base to the community. And it's our primary destination for visitors to the campus who are not taking credit courses. So the primary purpose of this project is to provide, really the first major upgrade. We've done a lot of peripheral, sort of, what I would call cosmetic changes to the building, but nothing significant has been done. We allocated money and deferred maintenance for some of the major mechanical equipment, for the air handling equipment, and the fan terminal units, very similar to what we're doing in BE now, has to be done in this building, because we have failure for some of those FTUs in this building. But we have a low quality of building for ML. I mean, the FCI is 22 for this building, which is, when we get to the deferred maintenance report, we'll see where this building is kind of falling in the poor category. And so it needs, it needs a facelift. It needs a little, really, more than a facelift. It needs some kind of major, I won't say structural issues, but, but long-lasting things in terms of its structural integrity, like the water penetration we have with the skylight and the exterior brick and...
Didn't we redo the roof recently, Silver?
We've done the roof, yes. We still have the firing range roof to complete, but the majority of the roof is relatively new.
I just feel like we've been working on this building for as long as I've been on the board.
Well, we've added to it, we've added, you know, we've added the dance studio, we've added the non-credit classroom, added storage space. But really, for the public spaces, we've added, you know, new carpeting and things like that, but it still has a lot of original amenities to it. We've done towels lately, we've done work in there.
Right.
But it's, as I said, it's a building, it's a lot of wear and tear because of the utilization. And so it's a kind of space that needs to be replenished more frequently than, than other buildings. So we'd like to address a lot of those deficiencies that we have in the building. So go on to page four. The key things then would be to replace the plastic skylight system and replace it with glass and a metal skylight system. Replace the horizontal movable walls, which are original, are failing. We have difficulty moving them, opening the areas in some cases, and we've actually had staff who have been injured trying to manipulate the sections in place. So we'd like to go with a vertical skyfold system, which opens upward as opposed to laterally, and we gain actually floor space by doing, so all the pockets that collapse all these folding doors would go away, because everything would be up in the air. Replace the lighting. As we saw when we had the tour, it's a pretty dark space. A lot of that is lighting. And we'd like to replace the finishes. And again, this is a public area, it's not the entire building, it's just the public spaces, the lobby, the corridors, all the seminar rooms. And we'd like to kind of add some electronic in terms of directories and kiosks. So we've got a lot of meetings, a lot of activities, and a lot of spaces. And when you look at the rendering, we kind of show some how we could have electronic directories, so visitors know what's going on in the various seminar rooms, and Conference Services could make those changes on the fly on computer and make changes as opposed to pinning up on a bulletin board by hand, which is the way it's done now. And then we create replacement and/or cladding of the failing brick and precast on the outside of the entrances. And we'd like to add like an inviting kind of external landscape garden. It's been proposed, actually for quite a few years, just outside this area where the sculpture is, towards the community.
Is that skyfold wall system in place in any other buildings in the area?
I'm not sure about the area. I mean, this would be like a conference center, a place that had multiple kind of used space. This would be electric, and so it's, or a key switch operated as opposed to now kind of manually dragging the doors.
You've seen this system?
Yes, yes, it's quite impressive.
And you apparently like it?
Yes. I think staff would like it. I think, I think anybody operating the building, because it'll save space, it'll save time. I mean, we get requests to reconfigure spaces in pretty short notice sometimes. You literally have to drag out some of these panels and lift them into, into place by hand. I mean, most of them collapse into closets, but not all. And so it's, we make the, make the reconfiguration of space much easier. But more importantly, the, the existing folding doors are just beyond, I mean, we can't get parts for them. The tracks are failing. And so at some point, they're not going to be usable, and we're not going to be able to configure the space based on whatever the clients request it. So if we go to page six, we see some visioning of spaces. And so we've got kind of a point or a information desk kind of space that you typically have in a, in a public building. You have kind of lounge spaces and, you know, large open spaces. On page seven, you have either lecturing or seminar space that are well-lit... On page seven, you have lecturing or seminar space that are well lit. Banquet kinds of spaces. And you have spaces that can be changed into small, more intimate spaces. And at the bottom of page seven, you see an example of the skyfold system. And the actual acoustics on these doors is much better than anything I've seen. It's actually better, almost as good as a solid wall, which is really, usually the downside of movable walls is that you lose the sound capabilities between spaces. But these have a very high STC or Sound Transmission Class rating that is really remarkable. On page eight, just flooring. You're thinking now tile is something that cracks. We've had a number of vehicles, as you know, in the lobby, something, you know, very large, loads. So you want something that's, that you could add, have different colors, not have all the joints that typically a tile floor has. And our experience has been having tile over time, when the tile gets replaced, it never matches a color. So it's just not a good solution. And so we would propose something like a torazzo that would last 50 years. On page nine, these are just examples of lighting schemes. Lighting is kind of really important in these kinds of spaces for seminars and for events in the lobby. And so there's a lot of new technology in terms of lighting out LED types of lighting sconces and strip lighting that kind of engulfs the entire ceiling. Page 10, these are just examples of outdoor event spaces. Perhaps we could have spaces that could be held outside events if we have the right type of space. Page 11 is, is sort of the as-is condition of how the space is now. Because as you can see, it looks kind of dark. And this is with the lights on. I mean, when we took these shots, every light was on. The lower left-hand corner, where you see the, the long shot of the lobby with the yellowing skylight. If you look at the floor directly below, this was taken at midday on a, on a day, it wasn't a cloud in the sky. And it's still dark. So if you look down on the window, you see that the sky is blue here. So looking down on the picture on the floor, it actually looks darker below the skylight, if you look at it. So the skylights are really diffusing the light and the fact that the color is, is changing on the south side because it's, that's where the sun is coming in. It's just not a very good, it just looks dark. So longer shot, kind of the same space, dark tile, dark columns, even though every light is on, still looks dark. This is just a shot, an upshot, kind of looking at the track system as these folding doors sort of go into the pockets. Now, these tracks are deteriorating and the little pulleys on the door, the top of the doors are failing too. So we can't get parts for these things. So it's kind of a makeshift operation. See outside, we saw some of this on the tour. On the other side that we didn't see at the other, at the main entrances, is this. And this is, if you look at that brick on the side, this, we didn't exaggerate. This is, this is the way it looks right now. I mean, these stress cracks right here in the brick, I mean, all this falling. And this is what it's called. When brick pops off, when the face of brick pops off, that means that there's, there's water behind both the precast and the, and the brick, which is a problem. It's acid rain, so we've got the precast is, it's failing underneath because water is getting in from on top. So there are two pieces of precast sandwiched together with a joint and the same thing on top. So as that joint fails, water's getting in between and that's where the rust is coming from. So this is the planned, planned area that we're talking about as far as the renovation. So it's the lobby areas, the corridors. We're in this room right here. And talking of the seminar rooms and the corridor for both the food service side where Fabulous Foods is and the other corridor where staff offices are. So we're not talking about the classrooms. We've done work in, in those already. We've done work in Towesley. These classrooms are okay. And so are the office there. So we're really talking about the public space. So this is a sort of what could be, kind of brighten it up, go with a glass skylight. Now, we didn't put glass for the entire skylight because of cost. And so we put like metal panels in between. But we think we'll get a heck of a lot more light with glass than we do with plastic, diffuse plastic skylights. And we changed the lighting. We had torazzo throughout the lobby area. It's another view through 101 with the, with the skyfold door open all the way to the back. Another view just out of Towesley, looking at the west entrance. This is a community conference room back here. This is always talking about having kiosks and information at each seminar room. And this could be interactive. We could build these into the columns. Recall the old columns, the existing columns are around. These would be either a slate or some sort of hard tile with, these would be lit columns. We'd have strip, strip lighting inside the columns. But we could have interactive directories about what the events are, what's going on in the building, or what's going on on campus generally. It's another view looking at the turnaround entrance. And there's an information desk. That's another view. There's an information desk. And we gained some little alcoves by not having the pockets for the, and it doesn't show in this rendering, but we're going to gain some alcove seating space for students or anyone who wants to sit down because we're, we're going to lose those, the space where we have the pocket doors for the folding walls. This is a shot with a new cladded column, precast, and a new skylight. So these are the panels I was saying. And this is at the turnaround, the drop-off. And this is kind of, it could be a potential garden. Here's a community room over here. And this could be an outdoor meeting space.
Nice for fundraising events.
So that would be, that would be like here?
Yes.
Okay.
All the way to the sculpture, which is.
Yeah, that would be a nice walking area. You currently can't just walk there.
So let's look at the activities. So again, potentially, nothing's been decided, but just looking at what could be done in the current fiscal year. I would just say only the design fees for the programming and schematic design. Getting that issued and having a board approve the design for. We get into FY19. This is where we can get into, you know, complete the schematic design and the DD or Design Development Drawings and complete the construction documents. Again, I see this being done in phases, phase one and one A. It'd be the exterior being phase one. And phase one A could be the skylight. You'd have to look at the logistics of how entry into the building, still using the seminar rooms while the skylight is being erected and the old skylight being demoed. That's going to cordon off that hole in the middle of the building. But this building has so many entrances and exits. I don't see that as really an issue. The bigger issue will be with conference services and planning events that may have been already scheduled for the lobby because many times things are booked a year or, or longer in advance. So just kind of working through that of when the work can be done. Phase two would be all the torazzo, all the tiles you see in the lobby. That all has to be kind of broken up. And that's, that's a big, big nasty dirty job. Along with all the rest of the finishes inside, I see as a phase two part of it. But it could be done in relatively, well, a year and a year and a half and be completely done, all phases by January 2020.
Sounds like January 2020 would be a lot of ribbon cutting around here.
When we get to the, the last section on the budget, you'll see it sounds like a bell curve. There's a 19, fiscal 19, or 2021 or 1920. It's really where all the spending is, where the bulk of the work is, is being done.
Do outside groups rent our facilities when they come here?
Yes, they do.
And if so, what kind of income loss do we experience when we're under construction?
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's a loss.
It's a good question. Depends on when we do it. It depends on when you do it because, you know, you've got the UA here and you can't.
You can't do it then.
You've got any work here, you can't do it then.
There's a boot for that.
Right. We're, we're busy pretty continuously, you know, throughout the year now in terms of, I mean, right now, Patrick's got the space pretty well utilized in terms of rentals or use by groups that come in that are connected to faculty or, you know, whatever. So the space gets used. So some of it's an impact. It just depends on the time period. And I, I think the number of groups that are here that are paid versus unpaid that use the space.
Not only that, you know, we'll have to be really, this building is so important to our community. So we'll have to be really smart about how we do this to make sure they know and figure out maybe another place they can have some of their things, even though there isn't.
Be tough to even do in July and August because of the ironwork.
Yeah, we can't do it all at once. We have to keep them happy. So, yeah, it's, yeah, there's, it's going to really be, this is an important building.
So we know it can't all be done at once. We know, you know, the lobby's going to have to be shut down at some point. But the good news is we can still get to the seminar rooms based on the way we have entrances and exits to this building from the north as well as the south. We can cordon off the lobby and still have access to Towesley and to performing arts.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, but there are events in the lobby. So whatever might be scheduled, we'd have to kind of, it's hard to replicate that space somewhere else on campus. Its size, its height are hard to come by. So there's, there would be some impact of it. You know, it's going to be some shrinkage of events for short periods, as short as we can make it.
You're going to have to start blacking out some dates.
Right now.
Right now.
Yeah.
Just so you get that time.
Yeah, because I mean, when you think about the, when you think about the usage and you think about the roof, that's probably it's mid-May to June is the, is the window. That's not very long.
I know, it's not that long.
Well, if all the material, I mean, obviously you've got to demo everything and you don't, it's like doing a roof. You don't want to, you don't want, you don't want to expose any more than you can get done in a day. Because you tear it off, it starts raining. You've got a disaster. So it's going to be, going to do it in chunks.
It's like the weather holds.
A couple of things. I'm looking at all these projects together and I guess further on, we're going to have some numbers on that. I'm wondering on the, about the impact on the cost of students to go to college here. I don't want to see tuition increases as a result of all of this. And that's a big concern to me. So I'm looking at this one, $3.8 million. And I'm wondering, can we break out mini projects? For example, replace all the glasses, one project that we take on. Deal with all the structural problems with the exterior and putting new exteriors as a separate project that we could do a different year. And whatever other interior projects or redesigns as its separate independent project. And try to bid, instead of building, bidding this out as one huge project, look at encapsulating different pieces of it. I think that does two things. It gives us the possibility that we have different, or a wider number of people that can bid on a particular piece of the project as opposed to having to deal with the whole thing altogether. So we could get some cost savings because we have more competition there. And the other thing that does for us is it enables us to more carefully scale down the time that each project takes as opposed to one big massive construction project, albeit in phases. But then we can dodge it around other uses of, of the building and the rental income that would be lost, which is another cost of the construction, that foregone revenue. I'm just wondering, instead of looking at this as one big project, we look at it as a series of smaller capital projects to, to, to get us to maybe five years on a total rebuild here.
Could we do that? Absolutely. In fact, before we kind of looked at this as holistically as one large project, as you said. We did have it just exactly like that. I mean, we had in the deferred maintenance budget to replace the folding doors on its own.
Right.
To replace the skylight on its own.
Right.
And do the outside work on its own. So yes, we could very easily do that. That's certainly something we ought to consider. It's not working, Warren, so. Go to.
Luckily, yeah.
Page 30.
The hard copy.
Just the last, yeah, page 30 just has a breakdown of, of the cost and the two phases. And, you know, again, construction contingency and.
I guess that was.
Site work and so forth, totaling the $3.7 million. Can you move to number four? So this is the proposed Capolali project for the Nursing and Allied Health Sciences Center of Excellence. So we presented this project as our next Capolali project in September. Before, we knew that we couldn't do that based on what the state told us. Said until you get approved for construction, or at least the next phase of a capital project, i.e. the ATC, we don't have that approval yet, you can't have another project. So this is, so ATC is still our project as of today. And this is our second project.
As soon as we get approval for the construction, can we do this?
Yes. Well, then we can put it as our priority one project.
Right.
In our five-year Capolali.
It's done and gone.
It's considered, yeah, this project is now authorized. So we talked about what the project was going to be a little bit at the September board meeting. But this is a project that's going to be placed in the technical and industrial building. And it encompasses about 22,000 square feet. We're not exactly sure at this point because we haven't gone through the programming process and planning. But we're sort of trying to get there now with the one project that's been approved that's part of this. And that's the simulation lab that we, we hope to have online, or will have online. I won't say hope to, we will have online by Sep, September, fall of 2018. We're not sure exact, well, we're getting close about the location.
Yeah, we're.
We're, we're, we're close. So I won't read through this all, but I mean, this is part of having the Nursing Center of Excellence status was part of the College's strategic plan and has been for three, four, five years. Five years. So this is sort of a natural progression, at least in the physical sense of placing that center along with the rest of the allied health programs into one venue. And that venue would appear to be the best place that we see for this project going is in the TNI building.
Amy, could I add?
Please.
I just want to add that our application has been approved by the National League of Nursing. And we're expected to have our site visit in January or February. It's January, February. February for Center of Excellence, so.
And that's without this?
That's without this, yeah. And we don't necessarily have to have this in place, but this is part of it going forward that we'd like to.
A question that I'd have, is I liked upgrading and doing as much as we can. What kind of impact does this have on our capacity in terms of the number of students we can handle? Because I know we're, we have way more applications than we're able to handle.
Absolutely.
Will this enable us to?
Absolutely. That's why we need this space right now. I think we've done a pretty good job with the space we have. We were able to double the nursing program, the number of students we take into nursing, and we've also added some health programs, the specialty areas in radiology, MRI, CT, and mammogram, all within the same space. We're at a point now where we're kinda maxed out on room and lab space. So this is necessary in order for us to keep meeting communities' needs for health programs.
So what I'd like to get is, again, the first place I look at is the bottom line of five point eight million dollars. With the increase in capacity that there was given, what impact could that have on tuition dollars as new revenue that comes in that we could see as a way to justify this? So as I look at a capital project like this, if the new revenue that comes in pays for it in 20 years, it's worth it, just on that.
And those numbers are, I would.
And that's why I'd be interested in trying to grapple with getting that, that sort of a.
Right, right. I can say space-wise, this would allow us to pretty much double what we're doing now with health and nursing. And I can also tell you that I have currently University of Michigan Mercy Health System and the VA Hospital all wanting to work with me for specialty programs that they need. VA needs the LPN to RN program that we're gonna start in the fall. St. Joe's wants the surgical sterile processing tech. So they all have their own little individual thing they want to grow. It's not just these major, big health systems, but we have a lot of smaller companies too like Wellbridge and Kennedy Healthcare that are reaching out to say, can you help us? Can we put in 30 people?
So what I'm looking for is a way to look at those needs that we would be helping to fulfill and put some sort of dollar value that would be coming to the college that could be used to really justify this sort of a capital outlay.
Well, if I may, it also, we're not sure how we wanna pay for this yet, right?
Right, exactly.
We might decide we wanna have a fundraising campaign, if that would ever work. I mean, since we wanna go for, I'm not saying we could probably raise all of it, but if it's a capital campaign and we're going to the state for 50/50, so that would reduce the cost of this. And if we could attach, now we're hearing, I mean, I know this, but you gotta put it out there, right? I mean, we're hearing all these hospitals want this. We could, we could, I mean, have a fundraising campaign, we could, that helps raise our match, maybe not the total match, but that's not impossible. So what we're doing today, and that's a very good question, what we're doing today is just putting forth the concept, but we have to really put our mind behind how we're gonna raise that money.
This is, this is the kind of project that, like I said, if it means new revenue coming to the college, at the same time we're meeting community needs with training healthcare workers and specialists. So that's a benefit we're providing to the community. But if we're bringing revenue in, maybe we're justified in not waiting for the state and going with a bond issue, some sort of a bond issue that we would be obligated to pay off and there would be interest payments, but right now interest rates are still relatively low by historic standards. Why wait for the state? If this is something that should be driven, this is the kind of thing that kind of, I'm looking at with those questions I was asking at the very beginning, maybe we can justify figuring out a way to get the money and maybe some of it is fundraised from the community, maybe some of it is some sort of a obligation, some sort of a bond issue, I don't know, we'd have to have a bond council tell us what we could do with that. But it may be a project that we can undertake and it may be justifiable to do that. That's why I'm interested in the revenue side of the equation. And otherwise, how long are we waiting if we're waiting for a state match?
And it could be years. I mean, having been approved for ATC, they're gonna look at, okay, what other schools didn't get, you know, approved lately? So this could be three, four years.
So this is the kind of project I look at in terms of the need of the greater community, not just here in Washtenaw County, but throughout the state, really throughout the country, for healthcare specialists and workers. If we can build the capacity to really deliver that training to more people and at the same time bring in some more revenue, tuition revenue, and dollar support from the other hospitals and healthcare facilities that wanna make use of the facilities.
That's a good idea.
It's, why not, why put this on as a wish list thing that we wait for the state?
I like that.
Does this plan include new space or simply remodeling existing?
Remodeling. If you look at the slide four, I mean, the whole intent here is to repurpose existing spaces.
I don't think, I mean, I like the idea of going ahead in various ways. I don't think tuition is ever gonna justify a five million dollar space, but it's a nice thought.
While we can.
Especially not in this program.
That's right.
Right, it would never, the return on investment is not a way that we would evaluate one single program like this occupational program.
But the other ideas were really good.
Well, it's, you know, but back to, you're right. Very right. But back to trustee DeVarty's point, it's the community good. And that's what we would be serving, is the community good. And although that is probably the most expensive program a college can offer, a community college offers, you know, when you look at it, if you come for a nursing degree, you have to take liberal arts. And so even though that's where the cost is, you're still taking the English, the math, the science, all the other courses that lead up to that. But you're right about the revenue, you know, there, that is not, the ROI has to be kinda looked at in a different way. But it would be a great, I think it'd be a great fundraising initiative, or Phil, we've already talked about it, you know, it could, we could, I think we should try it. I'm sorry, I get excited about stuff like this.
I just gotta mention one more about the community too. By becoming a Center of Excellence, that's my vision, that we're gonna be reaching out to the community, not only in allied health programs and a lot of tech programs, this is what we're seeing a need for. So our really expensive programs like nursing and radiology are already in place and we have that big expensive equipment. Well, I think what we're gonna see going forward is not a lot of investment in equipment. Like the sterile processing, we turn that around and Damon, you could probably speak to how much that costs, but that's a lot less than, very nil. So, and this is what we're seeing, people want technical programs. So usually there's not a lot of expense in the equipment and that type thing. So these are programs that are gonna be very, pretty easy for us to set up in just a couple of months is the idea. A lot of these we can turn around.
And tell them, some of those programs, and how much money people can make for, I mean, in no time whatsoever with training.
Yep, sterile processing, U of M is paying $20 an hour for our sterile processing techs that are, just take two classes, they take fall class, they take their theory, and then winter they do their clinical at either St. Joe's or U of M, and they're, they're all, there's a, I mean, St. Joe's and U of M are fighting over them to start them at $20 an hour. So they're, they're good.
And there are other jobs that we're seeing.
Patient healthcare, so they go into the home and take care of elderly, this is a huge, it's one of the number one positions in Washtenaw County that we need help with. So I have a couple of home care agencies that wanna work with us and Phil's involved with this too, that are willing to give us some money. They're willing to pay for their employees to go through these trainings. So it's just a really good opportunity, I think, for us. And healthcare is here to stay. You know, the Bureau of Labor has projected out to 2030 these huge increases. So it's, yeah, I think it's a great time. We're situated in a wonderful spot in Washtenaw County, having all these large healthcare systems. So I see it flourishing. I see this really being welcomed.
And we will be only one of three community colleges right now in the nation.
Yes, we only have two community colleges that have the National League of Nursing Center of Excellence title. So that by itself will open up a lot of conferences that I hope to have here for community, CEUs for St. Joe's nurses, U of M nurses, the VA. So a lot of community involvement will, more community involvement than what we've had will happen with allied health employees and nursing employees once we become the Center of Excellence.
I'd like to get a deeper look on how we can undertake this, what processes, whether it's a fundraising campaign or some sort of additional bond issue paid for by another village, offered to taxpayers, I think might be the kind of thing taxpayers would vote for in Fayetteville. I don't know if we can do that, to have some sort of a bond that's funded by a village that we put on countywide taxpayers.
It certainly is an option, but it's, it doesn't give you much of an advantage. We certainly can do our own placement at comparable rates.
We might be better off going for the renewal that we have to go for in 20, 19, I mean, 19, 20, hello, 20, 20.
And are we at the full, are we at the full level with that renewal? Are we fully, 'cause there's, we're fully at what we're limited by?
No, we're not. As to the one that's gonna come up in 2020, it's like, like the last one that Headley had not, not had on yet, so we'll get a little bit of a pick up with that.
But could we say we want a little bit more in order to fund something like this program here?
I mean, those are all options, right?
We could test it.
As part of that, no?
We could test it.
All right, this is, to me, is an exciting opportunity. And it's not one that I think it's worth waiting for a state process that could take us years. So this is the kind of thing that I think we should really strategize, what kinds of ways can we go out and get this money and make it work without the state? If other, if other board members are, I don't know if there's similar sentiment around the board table, but it's something that I think it would really, if you could deliver us a strategy from the administration to recommend, this is something that we think is a doable way to go after this.
Yeah, we could.
I'd be excited by it.
I'd be excited to do that, too.
I'd be very excited.
How about you, Phil, are you excited?
Phil and I would both be excited.
I didn't ask Bill intentionally.
And we'll talk in a bit, it's not just this project, right? There's a lot of other projects.
Yeah, I understand.
Deferred maintenance. I think when you look at it in the whole context, I think the college has a lot of options that can help to optimize the funding model for this, including this project.
Can you get two singly?
Okay.
So Warren, your laptop is just dead.
Oh, appeal to the binder.
I've already.
Okay, so if we look at page six in the timeline based on this discussion we just had, this sort of follows a capital outlay process. Can you go back one? Here. So, again, this assumes a capital outlay process, but current year, one of the things we were thinking of, sort of kinda goes along with trustee DeVarty's comments on ML, is to kinda do this in a phased way. We could do it right now. So we've already got planned to do and been approved in the FY18 budget to do one simulation lab, and we've got that incorporated into the campus repair and maintenance budget. So that's gonna come online in the fall of 18. That's part of this center, it really is part of it, it's just a piece of it. But one of the things I was proposing is we could do a, and maybe should do, a master plan for the center. Not, I'm talking about the campus master, but I'm talking about the nursing Center of Excellence and allied health master plan.
I do, amazing.
So as opposed to just kinda plunking and putting a simulation lab or other components of the center in an unorganized way, kinda plan, do a whole kinda plan, and we could kind of implement parts of that plan as we go along, just in phases, as we're gonna do with this new simulation. So that's kind of one alternative to both the process, which is, as we just discussed, may or may not happen. I mean, coming on, coming off of just having one approved capital outlay project, this could be years before this. Even with this scenario, I mean, we're looking at FY22, and this is, this is if we just get approved for a second project after just being approved for one earlier, which is probably not gonna happen. So if this is really an important project, and it is, we may wanna consider some other financing mechanisms to move it forward. But having said that, if we go to the next slide on the budget.
Could I just quickly, while you're on that, if we just did the master plan now, if we said sometime in the next couple of months, this is something we wanna move ahead with, how much would it cost us to get somebody to coordinate that master planning process?
In dollars, I don't think it would cost, be less than to do what the schematic design's gonna do. Because you're not really talking about actual laying out rooms, but it's really the relationships to those spaces within the whole space.
Is that somebody we bring in, a company or a consultant with experience in this area?
This would be a design firm that has experience with higher education, healthcare, or nursing facility projects.
And that would be less than 50,000?
Oh, yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we should do it.
Do the plan, yeah. But again, it's not gonna be detailed plans of every space, but it'll be the layout of the relationship of all these simulation layouts and the debriefing spaces and all the other lecture spaces, whatever it's gonna incorporate based on the program. It'll be a layout, and we'd have a better sense of how big it's gonna be. And we project that this is gonna be 22,500 square feet. Maybe it's not, maybe it's, maybe it's only 15,000 square, but again, maybe it's 30, I don't know.
But this would allow you to do things in chunks because you'd just be filling in the puzzle.
Exactly. So on the budget, again, based on capital outlay requirements, and this number could very easily swing in some major areas, you know, more or less. I don't think it would be more. I don't, I don't, just based on what I understand the project to be and what we already have existing, that this project's gonna be any larger than this, and my guess it's gonna be smaller.
Smaller.
The equipment line, I mean, this is a big ticket item, and that's again, kind of a, kind of plug number, that number could shrink or that number could, could be something that we kind of gradually over years, a lot for, through capital equipment. But it is an interior renovation, there is a lot of, there's more unknowns typically with that, which is why I've got a contingency of 10% on this. And just the nature of the type of construction, we've gotta put air, vacuum, I mean, this has gotta be like a real nursing, like a hospital kind of set. So you've got, it's just expensive construction, it just is, so. But until we really know what the master, what the overall plan's gonna be, I mean, it's really hard to really kind of say that it's gonna be 5.8, you know, again, if it's capital outlay, our share's gonna be like 2.9.
You might be able to do it.
For how much?
Three million?
Well, we could do, no, it's like ATC, if we had for me, and we could make it for me. It's gonna be five, we could make it five. Would it be everything that Belle wants in the center? That's a different story.
Well, it would be, yeah. I like the way you're saying "we."
Old habits, old habits.
No, no, no.
I think this is a marvelous idea to go ahead with this, and I'm not going to worry that Lawrence Lawrence's bricks are gonna fall on my head. I mean, there's a balance there between something that's falling apart and something that's brand new and exciting. I don't know what that balance is. Y'all have to tell us.
We have to do the.
Have to do them both. Okay, fine.
Warren, if I could trouble you to go to the second to last topic. Warren, if I could trouble you to go to the second-to-last topic. Number five? Okay. Going to give you a brief kind of update as to where we are with deferred maintenance. The last time we presented on this subject a couple of years ago, so I'm going to give you an update of what's happened in the last two years, what we're working on now, and what's unfunded and what we see as kind of the future, least in near term, the next three to five years. So we could kind of continue with the backlog of kind of reducing the backlog. The last, in FY '16, '17, there were 29 deferred maintenance projects that were completed, totaling 7.7 million. Of that, we did a lot of work in seven parking lots.
Really?
Trustee, Apache's favorite subject. 3.175 million in deferred maintenance for the parking lots. Based on our current list, we still have 135 identified deferred maintenance projects that are a little over 12 million, that haven't been funded yet. And one of the deliverables that we're going to have, Albert Kahn, our master plan update firm, is to do a comprehensive facilities condition assessment of the entire campus building. So we'll be cross-referencing our look, you know, as well as their look, and kind of working together to kind of extend, really, I'm sure, the number of projects and the cost associated with those projects, looking out for the next 10 years or so. And obviously to reduce our FCI, our Facilities Condition Index, which is kind of the key component to this. So if we go to the next slide, and we look at the FCI, sort of a metric at a glance, and kind of you see green, yellow, and red. So it's almost an even balance, you know, it's a third, a third, a third, it looks like, roughly. And just as a reminder, FCI is the current, current year, one-year backlog of deferred maintenance divided by the current replacement value of the building. So we want to be under five, that would be the objective. I mean, realistically, if we are under 10 for the campus, that would be fantastic. And you might say, okay, well, why, you've got the deferred maintenance budget, why not just throw it at the stuff in red and just get that up to yellow, right? Well, not so fast. Some of the buildings that are in that category, at least for me, don't really concern me about being in them, and I'll tell you why. Because some are unoccupied spaces, like the chemical storage building. It stores chemicals for, you know, for chemistry and for physics and biology, but that's all it does. And there's no occupancy there. Do we have some deterioration? Do we need to kind of upgrade it? Yes, but it's not a critical building. Energy centers where we kind of generate, it's just an expensive space. And the chillers and boilers that support a good chunk of the academic buildings are, you know, 20 years old now. So they're getting close to, you know, not the end of life by any stretch, but they're a concern, they're on our watch list. Family Ed is just a bad building. It's just a poorly constructed building. And it's not the children, it's just the buildings. It gets a lot of use, and it's just poorly constructed.
You want to give me ten grand?
If you look at our 2007 master plan, I mean, obviously, we planned, you know, if the plan was to be fulfilled, is to move the children's center to a different site. And that site is located on our 2007 master plan, in the northwest corner of the campus, just west of our perimeter road. Hazards Materials Storage Building, again, not really concerned, it's not an occupied space, it's where we store hazmat materials. Maintenance Building is one, that's one that is occupied.
Is that what we're putting your name?
No, that's POV. The Maintenance Building is where landscaping grounds, where all of our materials and vehicles, and that building is really falling apart. And one thing I will say, and we have a whole plan to at least develop to replace that building, actually fulfill, again, part of the previous master plan and relocating it. That building does concern me as far as, I mean, you see where the FCI is at 33. It's, I won't say it's unsafe, but it's, it's close to being unsafe. And so that needs to be addressed. Morris Lawrence, again, that needs to be addressed, a 22 for a building that gets as much use as this building does, and does certainly have academics in it, as well as, obviously, it's our front door to visitors coming to campus who are not taking classes, needs to move up. SRB, again, not so concerned, it's on the cusp of being fair at 11. And again, Student Center Building, a primary building for students and the administration, obviously. So that needs to move up. And again, how we look at the priorities for deferred maintenance, obviously, life safety is a priority, that's what we want to focus the dollars on first, if there's an issue there. Building envelope and major system failures, second, and then wear and tear. And so as you'll see, as we go on and we look at the kind of how the pie is sliced, we will spend money in buildings that have FCI of four because of wear and tear. We're going to be doing that with the Gundamirin flooring replacement, it's just, it's really bad. The building is in good shape otherwise in terms of, you know, physically, but carpet is really worn, and it's 13 years old, so we get about 10 years out of carpet on campus, typically. So you can see the lion's share of the money that we expended the last two fiscal years is, was really on parking lots. That's what campus-wide division means there. And so that doesn't really reflect really the building. So this FCI really, you know, we see a, you know, $3.2 million spent relative to parking, but that money doesn't help us on the building FCI's, reducing it at all, because it doesn't really count. That FCI is kind of developed strictly for building, so the industry hasn't really kind of captured a way to kind of tell us, okay, deferred maintenance dollars are not just going to buildings, they are going to other infrastructure around campuses. This is what we've got in progress right now, and you can see there's a lot of work going on in BE, BE's taking kind of almost a lion's share. Still some campus-wide money in Morris Lawrence, Health and Fitness Center, very little, OEB very little. And both of those buildings are highly, or actually low on the FCI. These are projects that aren't funded at all right now, that are on our deferred maintenance list, that's part of the 135 projects of this nation. And you can see the total and the distribution between the buildings. And we've got below the building name, the projects in that building. And how those future dollars, future unfunded projects are distributed across campus and buildings. Then between Student Center, Campus Wide, and Morris Lawrence getting the lion's share. And the overall breakdown of the total amount, and purple is the unfunded, the light green is the completed projects of the last two fiscal years, and the mustard color is what's in progress right now. That's deferred maintenance. Any questions, Warren? One more section, and we're done. Six, the last one. So what we're showing here are the five projects we've discussed tonight over five years, including the current fiscal year. So by column, you can see in FY '17, '18, by building advanced transportation, those dollar amounts are strictly any fees. For all three, for Student Center, for Morris Lawrence, you see nothing in nursing. I don't anticipate just spending any money architecturally for any fees for the nursing project. And you can see the money allocated for deferred maintenance at the bottom is money, is money that's already budgeted in the current year. If we go to FY '18, '19, you can see that the fees, again, for the design fees going into the preliminary design and final design, start to pick up again on all three projects. And again, based on the capital outlay processes, nursing starts to get into schematic design fees, design, schematic design and planning only.
If we go with the state.
Again, this is all based on, not what we've discussed tonight about using alternative methods, but for financing, but the state process. And again, you see the 2.65 for deferred maintenance in that line. Again, that's been, it's not been allocated, but BP Johnson and myself have been kind of working together on for current year, next year, and the year after that, 1920. Beyond that, 2021, 2122 are really placeholder numbers. So those numbers have not identified specific projects, the first three years have. And again, I mentioned earlier that this financing is, or expenditure is sort of like a bell curve, because as you look at FY 1920, in the bottom line there, 8.3 million, that's the, that year is where there's a lot of expenditure, because at that point, we're into the construction of ATC, we're into the first phase of construction for Student Center potentially, as well as Morris Lawrence, and we're starting, you know, we go through the state process, the full design, preliminary, and final design construction fees for the Center of Nursing Excellence. And deferred maintenance, again, you see at 3.1, has been already anticipated in future budgets that have worked with BP Johnson. So we go into FY 2021, those three major projects are done, and we start to see costs for nursing that kind of kick in now, in this, that fiscal year. And again, that placeholder number, 2.5 million for deferred maintenance. And as we go into the last year, FY '21, '22, we have most of the, you know, costs for just the expenses of, the construction is pretty well done for nursing, and we've got this kind of miscellaneous costs, access control in our half of the equipment expense. So you see the numbers on the far right are our expenses, so these aren't the project costs, so you see the 2 million instead of 4 million. And you see the 2.9 for nursing as opposed to the 5.8, because that's our expense. So when you add it all up, you see a cost of almost $25 million over...
So maybe...
Five years.
Time for Bill to tell us how we can afford this? Sorry.
One quick question?
Yes.
So on this nursing and Allied Health Sciences Center of Excellence, all of these numbers are half of the total.
Correct.
So where it says, is the master plan, like doing a master plan for this, is that in here? Or is that a separate thing that I raised?
Yeah, that would, I didn't really, that's not part of, because this is a state project, that's not something they're going to support.
Right.
Or is in their project outline. So that would be an expense we would incur.
Okay.
But if we didn't go this route with the state...
If the board wanted to say, we want a master plan, so we can evaluate this further, could we potentially do that in this year's budget? We'd have to ask Bill.
We have to ask Bill, but I think so.
I mean, if it's in that $50,000 range. Right. And then that gives us better information to move on, what direction to go.
Correct.
Frankly, I'd like to see a proposal come along that line, and see how the board comes down on it. And that's, I'd give that to the administration.
Yeah, I'm highly supportive of the nursing program, too. If I remember from one of the Economic Club meetings where they talked about the Wasna County Economic Forecast, healthcare was huge in that discussion. So it's good for the future of the county to invest in our healthcare program. It's something that's going to grow. So I'm totally supportive, you know, no matter how you guys plan it out. Anybody else have any thoughts on the projects?
To prioritize this, I think we're already in the advanced transportation center pipeline, so that's sort of there. But is the nursing come before deferred maintenance? You see what I mean in terms of priority of how much money we can raise and when? Or does, the Student Center Building seems to be at the bottom right now, I mean, compared to the others. I mean, I'm just talking about, you know, when we get $12 million, how will we spend it?
12 million, and get it?
Whatever.
That's 24.
Well, it's spread out.
No, I know, but...
I mean, is the priority the student, the nursing center, or is the priority deferred maintenance? Or can we do both? See?
It's a lot to digest.
So I like them all, this is good.
The deferred maintenance...
No, but I mean, I like the question.
The deferred maintenance, you're working on next fiscal year and the 19 to 20 fiscal year now.
Correct.
Are some of those deferred maintenance projects things at the Morris Lawrence Building?
Yes.
And some of those things at the Morris Lawrence Building, are they some of the things in this package?
Yes.
So really, there's almost some double counting here.
Yes. A little bit. And Bill and I had this conversation earlier today about that very point.
I'd rather have a high estimate than...
That's what we tried to do.
Yeah, I'd rather have the higher estimate.
Well, if we're going to say, I'm just saying that because if we're going to say, let's accelerate the deferred maintenance stuff, because that's some things we really need to do as high priorities, by doing that, we're already addressing some of the Morris Lawrence expenses.
That's right.
So it's not like we're putting Morris Lawrence aside in order to do that, but within that deferred maintenance is some of the Morris Lawrence.
Some of it.
Right.
But there's not much in deferred maintenance for the Student Center Building.
In these years, I mean, outer years, I think in the 1920, we've got...
I mean, in terms of the plans with the new Student Center?
No, this plan is totally different.
No, that is correct.
That's completely separate.
Yes, that is more renovation than is deferred.
Deferred. Would you like to hear from Bill about how he thinks we can afford this?
What you got, Bill?
Bill has a handout.
Just a scenario of two.
We should all buy a lot of tickets, that's right.
Finish out with numbers. So what I'm handing out is the top part of the slide, lines one, one through six, is just a summary version of Damon's, I think he just went through. And then the bottom is really just kind of sourcing the funds based on a couple of assumptions. One is that for all the years that we have a balanced budget, that we don't have either a deficit or a surplus, meaning we're not adding any money to the general fund from that year's operations. Secondly, it also assumes, and this was true when we presented the three-year forecast this past February to the board, that deferred maintenance requirements for each and every year was going to go up, right? And that was based upon the work that Damon's been doing on forecasting kind of the backlog, that's those 135 projects and the demands for that. The third thing is, is that the board had approved a transfer in fiscal '17 of $3 million. One million of that went into campus repair and maintenance, and that's still sitting there tonight. The other 2 million went into deferred maintenance, and for the most part, that was spent on parking lots, the extra money that we needed for the parking lots. So going into this year, we didn't have much money left over in deferred maintenance fund as carryover, other than for projects that were already in progress for that. fund as carryover, other than for projects that were already in progress with that. So, so with that being said, then, I kind of drew out, okay, so how are we going to fund $24.5 million, right, you know, for this? And so you look at it on line seven, and we funded a million five this year, 2.5 million is the assumed kind of steady state deferred maintenance funding requirement. Line eight, as I said, we have a million dollars that the board had allowed us to transfer from general fund into campus repair last year, that's still there and available to be used towards our projects that Damon has outlined for us. Lastly, on line nine, the assumption is, and this is a carryover from our conversation at the regular board meeting today, under the presumption that the forecast that the college would present at mid-year would support a forecasted surplus for the current year of at least 3 million, that the board would approve us transferring an additional 3 million on top of the 1.5 that we already have transferred into the deferred maintenance fund. So those funds then would be there also to support the capital projects. And then with those assumptions on line 10, this says, you know what, if we didn't find other sources, if we didn't find through Phil Snyder and the foundation and Rose's work on GIFs, and if we didn't go out for debt, if we simply were to draw off of our current day, no future earnings, but current day general fund reserve, which is about 29 million today, if, if, if we were to fully source it just out of the general fund reserve, can, can we do it? Based upon, as Damon showed, kind of that bell curve. But frankly, from my point of view, it didn't matter to me if that full 9 million was called for next year versus over the five years. You're still answering the question, can the college, yes or no, afford to fund 9 million out of its general fund reserve? And the answer is yes. I think that the college can. I think that we, when I, when I ran a pro forma calculation, remember the infamous, the CFI calc, which is the composite financial index? And we're just north of 4.0 today. Three is the measure of goodness. Anything above three is strong. And it took us a while to get above three, but we are. We're well into 4.0. If you look at the college's strength because of the reserves that we have, because that our debt is continuing to come down over this period of time, and, and your debt levels play a significant role in the financial viability of the institution, especially as seen through the lens of the CFI calc, that if you look at that, we really have some built-in strength even before pulling out the reserves, that we can keep our CFI ratio above 4.0. So based, based upon those pro forma calcs, pulling out the 9 million over this period of time still allows us to stay above the 4.0 ratio for, for, for CFI. So I, you know, just from a worst case, and this is a worst-case view, right, meaning that we don't find funding from debt, we don't find funding from fundraising to, to source the 9, the 9 million, the college has the financial resources and will still be in strong financial shape, assuming that we have break-even budgets during the period.
Go ahead.
My recollection is that CFI number, there's another number when you factor in the pension obligations.
Sure.
And we're nowhere near three.
No.
With that factor.
And neither is any institution in the nation. Every institution in the nation is well, well negative, which is why that HHLC asked for each institution to do it on a before GASV 68, and now GASV 67, when, when we adopt that, for post-reconstruction payment, as well as after, so before and after. But creditors, and this is what's really key, that creditors have, have also taken that same view to look at it on a pre-68 and now pre-75 basis, GASV 68 and so on.
I keep worrying that these pension obligations are somehow going to come home to roost.
And I think what's happened is, as you know, that, that the, that the state has capped our operation as an institution for the unfunded portion at 21% base, and the state has been funding each and every year a growing amount out of their, out of the general fund. And so we started out in the first year at about 2.5 million, that the state would actually pass through the college for us to put back into the pension fund on behalf of our plan participants. That's now growing this year up to 5 million. And that is all budgeted by, by the state.
Here's my fear, that the people making these decisions at the state change, and they change their willingness to continue to do that, or they reduce the amount of money they're willing to pass through to help us meet those pension obligations. So I see that number out there, and I'm not willing to just not think about it. And when we're looking at our reserve, that's something that I certainly hold in the back of my mind, is I, I'm not going to count on the state to continue to do this. Maybe they will.
And that's a, that's a valid thought, and, and my thought in return is, there are far more institutions in the state that would be severely impacted by, by any of those things versus WCC. Secondly, because we, we, we as a college have managed our finances so well, is that we do have debt capacity. So, and even with that extra debt capacity as a way to help manage the ebbs and tides of what the state may or may not be able to fund around the unfunded amount, is that we have capacity to manage that probably better than most institutions in the state. So we have, even after we pulled out this 9, 9 million, we have 20 million of reserves, and then even on top of that 20 million reserves, we would have probably another 5 to 10 million of debt capacity, depending upon the year to which we were to avail ourselves.
If people indulge me to continue the conversation, we, so with the 20 million, and we're just over 100 million for our budget, so we're just under 20% of our budget, our reserves, if we pull the 9 million out, will be at just under 20%. What kind of range are the people recommending that institutions like ours have?
Yeah, if you look at the policies, and I did some research on that, you know, my, my goal is to always have between two and three months of operating cash in reserve. A lot of policies are set at one month, or two, or two months of reserves. Best practice is in that two-to-three-month range of reserves. And that doesn't take, take into account, which the college also has not done, to get a short-term line credit. And that short-term line of credit would buy us an easy two or three months worth of reserves. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, does that bring us to the end, then?
Yeah.
All right. If I may, first of all, thank you very much for chairing this meeting. I'd like to thank the trustees for being here, Damon. Outstanding job, thank you so very much for all of this. And I'd like to thank everyone that added to this report by all the information that, you know, everyone around this table and in this room has given. And Bill, thank you so much for keeping us in good financial standing. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.